Our first item is the approval of the agenda.
Second, the motion.
We have a motion by Commissioner Gross, second by Commissioner Mojo. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carried. We have some employee recognitions, and we'll get to those. All right. First, we have 15 years of service, and we have Marcy Felix. And I don't think Marcy's here today. Marcy from Motor Vehicle. So we will make sure that that gets passed on to Marcy. Thank you for your 15 years of service. And we also have Jennifer Waller from the Auditor's Office. Is Jennifer here today? From my understanding, she would not be here either. So again, thank you for the 15 years of service for Jennifer. And next, we have Stacy Goingsrudd. Stacy is here. Stacy has 20 years of service. Yeah, Kirsten, you want to?
I do, actually. So Stacy, as you all hear, she's been working for Clay County for 20 years. She has worked in the mental health unit for 20 years, working with the mentally ill, and that is not an easy population to work with for 20 years. But she comes to work every day with a positive attitude. She is a leader in our unit. The other coworkers know that they can process things with her. She's easily approachable. She's well-respected in the mental health field. Providers enjoy working with her. She's dependable. She really, she's an asset to our unit, and it's been a pleasure working with her for the past 20 years.
Excellent, thank you. All right. Next, we have 25 years, and it's Monte Martin with the corrections. Is Monte here? He's not even showing up?
He wants you, but he couldn't make it to there.
Yeah, right. Julie, you'll give that to him? You better say something about him.
I will. I have a couple of great things to say about Monte. Monte's a great employee. Everybody knows who he is. Everybody in the community knows who he is because he's done so many good things for our community. He's been a great asset, not only to the jail, but I know to the Sheriff's Department in many different situations. And for Monte, I appreciate everything he's done for us here. And thank you, Monte. I think he's probably watching.
And then we always have to have somebody who has, beats all these records. Steve Lanson, 30 years. You're about halfway done. Congratulations and thank you. Sheriff.
Thank you. Thank you.
So Steve, Steve's been with the Sheriff's Office now 30 years. He started as a jailer, actually. First two years as a jailer, he has worked his way up the ranks with the Sheriff's Office. He was a patrol deputy, and then he went into the, into the position of lieutenant, where he was a patrol lieutenant. He was actually my boss for a while. And then he went to the patrol, or I'm sorry, he went to Investigations Lieutenant. And from there, Chief Deputy. He had to take over as Chief Deputy during a time where we were just kind of ending the building process for the LEC, which was kind of a challenging time. So he, he took the charge of that, and he led us through that. It was, it was a difficult time to take over because that, that was challenging in and of itself. But we were also going through an election and everything else during that time. So he really led the department forward with that. So Steve, we truly appreciate your work that you've done over the past 30 years, and especially over the past, oh, man, five, going through that building process, because that was not an easy time to do. So, thank you.
We will continue on with citizens to be heard. Do we have any citizens to be heard? Any onlines? Steve, for?
Nothing, Mr. Chair.
Okay, all right.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I noticed that on our agenda, we continue to say during the pandemic, you have the opportunity to share feedback at board meetings by completing this form. The option is also available for folks to appear in person, and I would like to see that change noted on our agenda, just so that if, if anyone saw it at a glance, they would know.
We will have that noted. Thank you. All right. We'll move on to the approval of bills and vouchers.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Gross, second by Commissioner Ebinger. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Carried. And we have the approval of the minutes from February 16th.
So move, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Mojo, second by Commissioner Kaylee. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign. Motion carried. At this time, we, we would also like to recognize the Minnesota Steam Threshers reunion for their contribution. Sheriff, do you want to just briefly give recognition to them?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, and good morning. I'd just like to, to recognize publicly the Steam Threshers for this great donation. They donated $1,000 to the Sheriff's Office Posse, which was very kind of them, as well as $750 to the work detail. This was kind of a surprise to me because we weren't out there last year. But in previous years, the Sheriff's Office and our work deals, work details, spend a lot of time out there preparing for the show. And then the Posse spends a lot of time out there during the show assisting us with anything that comes about, whether it's medical or helping people find their ways with their cars, because sometimes they have a little bit of tendency to forget after a long day. So it's very kind of them to do that. They're also in the process right now of building us a shack as well for out there. So we have a great working relationship with the, the Steam Threshers reunion, and we hope to see that continue. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff. I know, I know there are several, several different community organizations throughout the county that often will, will give contributions, and a lot of them go to, to your department for, so that, I'm, I'm sure that's an indication that good things are happening in terms of support for the community. So congratulations to you guys, too, for getting that.
Thank you. Very much appreciated.
Okay, very good. We will then move on to our COVID-19 weekly update. Kathy and Jamie here again this morning.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
We provided a handout with all of our data. Again, as you can see, and in comparison to last week, we have increased the number of cases, both in Clay and in Minnesota. So we went up a little bit in the cumulative cases. 6903, last week, it was 6807. So we bumped up a little bit. We had a few more deaths in Clay County that have been registered now. So it was 84 that were noted, and now it's 87. And then in Minnesota, they've, they've had a few more deaths as well. People out of isolation, now those are the people that have recovered, that have had COVID and are out of their timeframe of being infectious. Our active cases did jump up to 106. Last week, we had 51. The prior week, we had 46. So we're seeing, you know, a little bit of a, an increase in that, which, which is maybe not unexpected, given the, you know, the activities that are going on, the fact that we are going to see this, this virus isn't done. We don't know if we have variant strains in our community or not. That hasn't been determined. But we, we would love to see that stay at a low rate, but it's, it's up to 106. So we do have an increase there. Hospitalizations are relatively the same, those in ICU as well. So those numbers are not going up, which is also a determinant of the community and, and the public health measures. Our 14-day case rate is 9.87, so that's really good. That number is, again, as we monitored this throughout this past year, this is, you know, really low. It's a good rate at last week's same time period. It was 14.33. So we did actually see that go down. So that's positive. So the cases per week, you can see, again, you know, an increase just this last, just this reporting period. So, so the hus, the active cases, the age range for those, again, it's the 40 to 49, 45 to 49. But we've also seen a bump in the active cases with the 10 to 19-year-olds. So we'll see an increase in those cases. It is indicative of the number of cases that we have. So we're seeing a little bit of bump in those age-range youth. And then the cumulative cases, the age range remains about the same. So we're seeing that 15 to 19, and, and that was, it was 20 to 24 last week. So it kind of varies based on the active cases that are going on. And then you see the graph with the hospitalizations and deaths. So as we talked about, the hospitalization rates are stable. And then the deaths, we did go up in Clay County. And then in Minnesota, there's increase in some deaths as well. So it's, it's not too significant, but as we, as we monitor this week to week, you know, the important measures that we're doing are still to remind people that all the preventative measures, you know, that they're still not gathering in large groups, masking, staying home when you're sick. All of those measures stay in play. Sometimes it's easy to get lax now that we're getting vaccine out. But we want to remind everybody, it's very important because we need to reach a large population before we really have this herd immunity. So we really need to, to get that vaccine out. And one thing I failed to measure or mention last week, and maybe Steve mentioned it in his report, we are recruiting for variable hour nurses to help us. And, and we have a number of applicants, and so Jamie and I are going through that. You know, we're down three or four nurses right now. So it's very challenging to kind of keep up with the weekly. We need to do the weekly vaccinations, and it's usually three to four days that we're doing that. So to get nurses to dedicate that much time is really challenging. So we're excited that we have some applicants. We're excited we have some people that can help us, and so we'll get those individuals on board, and, and that will be an asset. We also are, really appreciate the higher ed opportunities. They're providing student nurses to, to help us in our vaccination clinic. So that is really great. So all of the higher ed, including NDSU, are coming over, and we're assigning the, the nurses. It's great experience, the student nurses, great experience for them, but very helpful for us. So we're really, we're really excited about having those individuals every week. So it's a challenge to keep up with getting our vaccine out in 72 hours. That has not changed in Minnesota. That's still the requirement, that that vaccine has to get out in 72 hours from the time we receive it. And we're able to keep up with that. It, it can be challenging, but we, we've been able to do it. And we've also not wasted any doses. So that's our goal, is to keep the vaccine pushed out, don't waste any doses, and we're requesting as much as we can. So anyway, I'll turn it over. Jamie, I'll talk about the, more of our vaccine stuff in our clinics.
So we have a couple of other handouts, the one that we have. But also, we've got a little graph down there for the doses that Clay County Public Health has been administering to share with you. But just looking at the total number of people with at least one dose of vaccine, Clay County is at 15.2% of the county population. And statewide, we're sitting at 16.2%. Total number of people who have completed the vaccine series in Clay County is 7.7%. And that is 4,877. And on the Minnesota side, 8.4%. And then the people aged 50 to 64 with at least one dose, and that's 16.9% of the population in Minnesota, 15.1%. And people aged 65 with at least one dose of vaccine, 54.9% in Clay County, and 52.6%. And then that cumulative number of doses administered is by Clay County Public Health only. So the 5,709 is the doses we have administered ourselves. And so then the graph just shows from week to week what we have administered. And, and this week, we are planning for 1,700 or more. We've requested more. So it just keeps kind of, it, we ask for it, and then what we receive. So for sure, we will receive 1,700, but we've asked for another 200 from a neighbor as well.
Do you have a breakdown on?
The doses.
First versus second?
Yeah, so we have 600 of those are second doses. The rest are all first doses. So we have a clinic today, this morning, from 10:00 to 2:15. And we have posted and opened that to 65 and over. We still had openings when we left the office, so we've got some opportunities there. We also continue to open it to healthcare providers and E-12 and childcare providers as well, so that we, whenever we post a clinic, we give them the opportunity to register as well. And then we have a clinic again tomorrow, Thursday, and Friday. So we've been doing every day but Monday because we don't have vaccine on Mondays. So vaccine comes in on Tuesday.
Commissioner Mojo.
Thank you. Have we identified a strategy needed to vaccinate shut-ins or elderly in our community?
You know, we, we've talked about that with our partners in home care and hospice. And when we looked at what the needs are, they're able to bring vaccine in. So Sanford, Esencia, everyone is partnering pharmacies as well. So yes, we've had, from the very beginning, conversations of how to address that population.
And I appreciate that. That was kind of the stem of my question, is that we have partners working with these individuals throughout our community. Did we identify any other ways to further collaborate? You know, I, I think of Lakes and Prairies has a van that they've used to get elderly to appointments throughout the rural parts of Clay County. And I just, I appreciate that you're working on that and think that any further collaboration would help to ease the burden that you all are experiencing. So thank you.
Absolutely. Then another handout that we have is just the, the governor yesterday kind of shared his plan for what they think the next population will be. So basically, we continue to vaccinate the, the healthcare providers, the 65-plus, the pre-K through 12, and childcare. And the goal is that we will continue to vaccinate. And once we receive 70% of the 65-plus, we'll expand to others with underlying health conditions, and then the workforce exposure risk. And so they talked a little bit about what that workforce exposure risk is, and they're focusing on those that are not able to maintain that six-foot distance. And so, again, from the healthcare, all the way down the line, it's been about the challenge of that their work environment does not allow them to maintain the, the six-foot distance. The Commissioner of Health mentioned the meat market plants and those kinds of things where they're working in industry that make it a challenge for them. So then people, so basically, looking at early spring, in April, they will be looking at people with specific high-risk conditions. And so just some examples of those are people with Down syndrome, those with cancer treatment, you know, immune compromised for organ transplants, sickle cell anemia, they just threw out some of those. And then there's like a little guide that tells you what would be covered under that. And then I, I mentioned the targeted essential populations. And then looking at late spring, they would be moving down to the people who are 45 to 64 with one or more high-risk medical condition. And then people 16 to 44 with two or more high-risk medical conditions, and again, essential frontline workers. And then looking at May, they're, they're talking about the 16-plus plus with underlying medical conditions, age 50 to 64, regardless of their healthcare condition. And then, again, more workforce. And then in the summer is where we get to that general population. So just focusing on that the general population of all ages without health conditions will be in the summer. So, yeah, so there's a plan. It's not the phases that we had originally been talking about, but kind of a month by month. The governor did mention that if we get more vaccine, this will all move faster. And so the, the ability to get more vaccine into our hands is our goal, and we are able to continue to vaccinate the next population group.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a further comment, as John, the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine now seeks approval, and because it's a one-dose, I think, I think some people would maybe prefer one versus two. But can you talk a little bit about how, how that will go in terms of administering?
Basically, what they're saying is, the important thing is to get a hold of a vaccine as quick as you can. So whatever vaccine is available, they're all good vaccines. It's just the difference is that you have one dose versus two. But access may be more of a challenge for you. And, and so I think it was 45,000 doses that are planned to come to Minnesota, and that's not a lot of vaccines. So don't wait. Continue to take access to any vaccine that you have available to you. And I believe it was the Johnson &amp; Johnson, they posted an 85% effectiveness. So the effectiveness is much better than we've had for flu vaccine, and it's important, the more people we have vaccinated, the more we can keep that, those doses, the disease under control.
And we did request Johnson &amp; Johnson for us. We made that request on our survey yesterday that was due to the state. So we would accept Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine if it becomes available to us. So we would then have the three vaccines that we're working with right now. Moderna and Pfizer are our two. But yeah, we would accept Johnson &amp; Johnson.
Any further questions? Thank you again.
Okay.
See you next.
Thank you very much.
All right. Next, we have a request for approval of Resolution 2021-18 to enter into an agreement with the Minnesota Department of Public Safety for Speed and Aggressive Driving Enforcement Project. Sheriff Empeting.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. Yes, we're looking to enter into this agreement with the Minnesota Department of Public Safety to address specifically some of the high speeds that we're seeing out on our roadway as of late. There was a news story that was done on it last week. I know the State Patrol had commented on the high number of speeds they're seeing. They're seeing speeds well into the 100 miles an hour at some times. I recently issued a citation to somebody for traveling 82 in a 40. A 40 mile an hour zone is obviously residential area. It's, the speeds, for some odd, strange reason, since the pandemic started, have really increased. So this would be a way to combat that. We're not asking for any additional funds. It would either come out of our, the $800 match would either come out of overtime, or we'd also be able to do that out of our, just regular time that somebody is working. We'd be able to have them work just while they're on shift. And if it's quiet, they can log into their, their Roar system and do a couple hours of speed enforcement, and it would come out of just regular time.
Just to add to what the Sheriff's indicated, for years, we, Morehead PD, when I was chief there, participated in this program. The money the State Department of Public Safety sends in really helps. And these officers are, while doing this, they are directed straight into traffic and into areas where we have problems. And I've noticed, just traveling around a little bit and getting out more now, particularly on the highways, I've seen some real, real uptick of speed related, or speed issues and reckless driving. And we've seen it in the pursuit numbers, too. So it'd be good to get them out there.
We're also coming into our summer months, and our summer months are generally the times where we receive a lot of speed complaints, you know, specifically County 10 and 26 and County 2. We get a lot of complaints. We'd be able to help combat that with this as well.
And the DWIs that come with.
Yep.
Late cabins opening up.
Go, Chief.
I would, I would just move that we, we accept this resolution.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Ebinger, and a second by Commissioner Gross to approve County Resolution 2021-18. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carried. Your approval is there. All right. Next, we have our annual Solid Waste Management Department update. We have Kirk, and we have Brett, and we have Shannon here.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I brought a whole crew, or a part of my crew this time. They do most of the work, so I thought that they should receive some of the accolades from the board here. It's been a busy year out at the Solid Waste Department. The landfill has been particularly busy. COVID has been a challenge. Helping the Sheriff Department look for murder victims, that's been a challenge. Construction, there's been an awful lot of construction out there. So it's been a extremely busy year in the Solid Waste Department. So with that, I'm going to have Brett just give kind of a brief overview of the activities out at the landfill.
Morning, Brett.
Good morning. So this last year, we opened up a new landfill. That was 1.5 acres. And then we also closed 3.3 acres of landfill. With that, we installed 13 new gas wells to harvest the biogas and control orders out at the landfill. We also constructed a new public drop site to be able to dump dump trailers. And our past one was very undersized as well. So this has been very well received by the public. With that, we bought a hook truck to take the dumpsters from the public drop site and dump those ourselves, as well as use that for other things around the landfill. We also hauled 3.5 million gallons of leachate this last year, which is up from 2.2 million gallons of leachate in 2019. And, you know, 2020, that costed us a quarter million dollars just to treat that leachate. So that's a very big expense. We also hauled 8,500 tons of garbage over to the Perm incinerator. So that was also up from 2019, which was 7,600 tons. So that's to help reduce the capacity of the landfill and helped to keep that landfill open for many more years. Right now, we have 55 years of life expectancy at the landfill. And this last year, we received 60,000 tons of waste at the landfill. So a lot of numbers, but any questions?
Is the gold still to haul over to Perm, 96 tons, or what we had now, 85?
It's 8,400 right now is still the number that we're, based, based on their capacity of 54,000 tons, we're at 8,400.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner, it's 15% of the budgeted capacity of Perm. We are 15% owners, and we, we get to take 15% of the total budget, budgeted that the Perm facility can handle. So they.
That's as much as they can handle. I mean, we could haul more, but that's always that, as much as we can handle, too.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, that's exactly right.
We can haul more if, if the facility can handle it. We could, we could exceed the 8,400 if the facility can handle it. But right now, that's, hasn't been the case, so. Commissioner Ebinger.
Yeah, the, the increase in leachate, is that a result of weather, or is that a result of increased operational function there, or what, what causes that?
Yeah, a little bit of both.
It's got to be green. Just hit it, and then it's green.
Yeah, both. We closed off 3.3 acres of landfill. So now that stormwater will be able to go in the ground versus into the landfill. But also, a big portion of that was weather as well.
I had the same question.
Same question? Okay. Well, I know that Kirk and I have had several conversations about leachate and, and how nice it would be to find an alternative source for taking that to reduce that price, or to maybe to have somebody on this side of the revenue, this side of the river be able to get that revenue off of, off of that leachate. So we'll, we continue to work on that. It, it all depends on what plants are capable of handling in terms of the, you know, cleaning of it or whatever they have to do with it, that they, whatever it is they do. But good work, Brett.
And it's going to be a constant discussion because one of the things that leachate, and you guys have heard me talk about this forever, but the PIFAs, the forever chemicals that are basically everywhere, there are going to be a real need to treat. are basically everywhere, there's gonna be a real need to treat that in the leachate, and it's gonna be a problem as we move forward. It's gonna be a major additional expense for the landfill. So, with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Shannon.
Good morning. It's been an odd, odd year with the COVID, things we've had to put in place. I was able to fill in this year. I got to spend at least a week at every facility as COVID rolled through our families and our staff. And that, that was, that was interesting, and I was glad to be able to see the operations everywhere, and that we were able to keep our staffing levels at a level where we could continue to operate. It got kinda dicey. Brett, at the landfill, they did a real good job of shuffling around and making sure everything was covered. At one point, they were down three guys out of the five that are there. So, so that was, that was a real challenge. Our spring, in recycling and public education, our spring events were canceled in Barnesville and Holly, and the Business Electronics Collection was also canceled. We did, or we are, working with small businesses. Those collections, the Business Electronics and Fluorescent Bulb Collection is really geared for small businesses or churches that have under a hundred bulbs, maybe four or five monitors, where it's just not feasible to have a company come in and make a stop and have the stop charge for that. And so, we've been working with them in other ways, having them just drop at our, our facility and pay their recycler directly, but have them pick it up at our facility rather than having the, the collection. And that's, that's worked pretty well in most cases. So, it's real nice to have the flexibility of the college student staff that we have, so they're able to meet them in, at odd times. So, that, that's how we've been really working around the business collection. The, I know that the residents in the, in Barnesville and Holly did miss the collections, but they, it seems have been able to really make it up. The numbers haven't changed a lot. Our electronics recycling has been down a little bit, but we're, that's what we've been hoping for. We were getting rid of those big consoles, those big tube TVs. So, we haven't, I don't think we saw a lot of change in our collection due to those, those being canceled. We do have new protocols at the electronics collection. Staff doesn't help unload out of cars. People need to make sure they've got enough help with them to unload and, and put things where they belong. Education activities went online. That was exciting. Kirk and I did a live, Facebook Live from the landfill, Jenna, at the library. You would know about that. It got a really great response, so that, that was fun. We, I also did some Zoom meetings. We did something with Nature of the North and some other groups. So, it's, it's actually probably reaching a broader audience, really. And I've, I've found my, I've been able to go to more trainings. I've been able to go to more conferences because it's offered online. And we're doing great things in Clay County. I've been able to brag about, at the landfill, the gentleman and the reuse facility that we have at our landfill. When private loads come in, the staff there looks at the load, and if there's something usable in that load, they put it in the reuse shed. And that was a brand-new idea, that, that there was a holes, at one training, there was a whole track about how to do that. We've been doing that since the beginning of time in Clay County. And I was able to brag at this conference, like, you know, it's not that hard. We do that. So, that, that's been really neat to see, that we've been able to, to talk with a broader audience that, that way. The recycling stream has changed. Less business recycling, more recycling from home, which really plays into our recycling numbers this year. We, we did recycle approximately eleven more tons, just in our, in our household recyclables, the cardboard, the plastic, the metal, the cans, the tin cans. And the cardboard, but that's, that's nineteen compared to twenty. Newspapers were down sixty-two tons. We went from everyday newspaper to, right. And then that's an expected thing. But keep in mind, we, we recycled eleven tons more, sixty-two tons less of newspaper, about fifty tons less each of aluminum cans, sorted office pack. People are not in the office making copies continuously in mixed paper. Glass and magazines were also down significantly, which is expected and, and ongoing. Less glass is used, fewer magazines are out. Plastics, plastics and commingled went up slightly. But cardboard, think of all of those deliveries. We were about two-hundred-and-twenty tons more cardboard was recycled in Clay County this year. So, that's what brought our numbers up. And so, that's really, that's what's going on. It reflects what's going on in society. So, we can see that.
You say two-hundred-and-twenty tons?
Two-hundred-and-twenty tons more of cardboard, approximately. So, yeah, just, it, it's something to think about. In the fourth quarter, this, these are fourth quarter numbers, just so we can get the closest to. We paid one-point-eight cents a pound for the processing of our recycling, which comes out to thirty-six cents a ton, which is not, not, not unreasonable. And that's for sorted recycling. The commingled recycling was quite a bit more than that in the nineties, ninety-some dollars a ton. But it, the recycling that we collect in our city sites and at our township sites is all sorted. So, we're looking at that, that thirty-six dollars a ton. We do, on those materials, if the market is strong enough and they meet the floor per ton what our, what our processor receives in the markets, then we get a market share back. Most materials didn't have any market share this year. There's, there's no recovering any of that money. However, sorted office paper, which was down, and metals did get some market share, but it didn't cover the processing. Aluminum cans are the only commodity that made money this year, and they made, we made about sixteen dollars, sixteen, excuse me, sixteen cents a pound, or three-hundred-and-twenty dollars a ton on the aluminum. So, it's not a moneymaker, but really, if we continue to sort recyclable, recyclables, the per-ton cost is, is reasonable for the processing. We syndicated the Trash Talk. I don't know if, if everyone is aware that we do have a column in the FM Extra Monthly. We are also now in the Yulin Union, which is hard for me to say every time, and the Holly Herald Monthly also. So, that was exciting. We also, with Brett, spoke to the new resident drop site at the landfill. We were, we are putting in, I think that application is going in this week, for the modification of the landfill permit. We will put in for an expanded capacity for recycling there, as we do consistently exceed our, our recycling capacity, our permitted capacity of the landfill. Other things that are continuing, the recycling of the pump, the Christmas lights, our pumpkin recycling, and all those things continue. Any recycling or public education questions that I could address at this time? And I was just going to, I've been tasked with briefly looking at the Household Hazardous Waste, because I'm familiar with the program also. And Julie is in Jamaica, so I'm all jealous about that. But twenty-twenty was, was a strange year at the Household Hazardous Waste Building, just due to the small facility, which is something we're looking to change with our new transfer station that we're breaking ground hopefully this spring with. The exchange there has been closed. It's too small. There's not enough space to have people come in and shop for product. So, that has been closed since everything shut down for COVID, which is, which is a real, real loss to the community. That was a well-used or is a, a well-used service. A lot of people get product from there. So, we're looking forward to being able to open that again. Julie's kind of, she went through the, the poundage and everything here. And just noting that our rate in our county, forty-seven pounds per household on average collected from residents, we're really getting those barn cleanouts, still getting those. Someday, hopefully, that, that, that will be done. But when estates change hands, or when, when farmsteads are sold, that's where we see the, the big loads. Does anybody have specific questions about the Household Hazardous Waste? Thank you for your time today.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanna touch briefly on what we have looking forward to here in twenty-twenty-one. As you all know, we're gonna be doing some construction, and tomorrow we'll be interviewing contractors to decide who's gonna be the, the contractor to build our facility. So, we're all very, very excited about that. I think we're gonna try and get the collection opportunities in Holly and Barnesville back on board again this year. One of the things that Brett did not mention is we did collect about, what, about seven-hundred pounds of ag chemical containers, which is pretty significant. We'll be doing that again this year as well. That's always very well received in the community. The other major issue that we're looking at, and this is something that's just been a problem, is contaminated soil, petroleum contaminated soil. Not a lot of other counties provide any kind of disposal method for that. But we have a lot of construction here in, in Clay County, so we're looking at trying to develop some opportunities to manage that. That is gonna be a challenge. I haven't gotten a lot of help from the PCA on trying to move any of that forward, but we're still plugging away on that. So, you'll be hearing about that as we move forward. The other issue that I think that, you know, you all should be aware of, as I've talked about, PIFAs, the Forever Chemicals, those you'll hear quite a bit about this year. There's some legislation that's being proposed, gonna be asking the, the landfill to do additional testing of the leachate. Also, they're also talking possibly about doing some air sampling as well, you know, additional air sampling. So, that's something you'll be hearing about as we move forward. The other legislative issue that's really troubling to me is the PCA is asking for an additional three percent tax on our gross revenues at the landfill. And what they wanna use that money for is to hire five more people at the PCA to work on waste reduction issues. I contend that the, the SCOR money that's being received, a big portion of that's already going into the general fund. So, if the PCA wants to start new programs or hire new staff, that that's where they should draw the money from the money that's already being collected rather than add an additional tax.
Well, plus, plus they should give us more of that money back.
Absolutely, Mr. Chairman. It's, and, you know, as Chairman Campbell has mentioned many times, and I mention every time I get a chance, gas tax, if you took gas tax and used gas tax for anything else other than highway projects, you'd have people pretty excited about that. And the same thing is true with the SCOR taxes being collected. It's being used for other things rather than solid waste, and that's, that's really a problem. So, that's, that's an issue that I'll be coming back, we'll be writing a letter, I, I think, at some point in time. But it, it's an issue that needs to get just a little more right, so. With that, we, I, oh, one other thing here. I know everybody that comes and talks to you about their, their programs say their staff is the best staff, but I wanna tell you, I have the best staff. They are absolutely the best staff. And I can assure you that the citizens of Clay County are getting their money's worth from the staff that I have. They're not only hard workers, but they're just incredibly good people. And so, I just, I wanna thank them for all their efforts that they provided this year to provide good service to the citizens of Clay County and also make my job easier as well. So, with that, if you have any questions at all, I stand to answer any questions.
Are we gonna vote on the best staff after all the report?
Do you wanna make that motion?
I'm not that dumb.
I want somebody on my committee.
All right. Well, thank you all. I certainly enjoy my work with solid waste. I've been doing it for a while, and, and I have to agree with you. You got some pretty darn good people working for you there. That's pretty good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Milton, I'm sure the first thing you're gonna tell us is you got the best staff and-
That's right. Let me tell you the debate.
Well, good morning, Brian, County Attorney's Office. You're gonna give us a, an update on your department?
Yes, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, thank you. Pleasure to be here, of course. I wouldn't start my comments off just by saying it's always interesting, or it's good following a lot of the other departments, because, of course, we cross over a lot of different departments. It's, it's not just law enforcement. It's not just social services. We get an opportunity to work with Otter's Office, with Elections, or Corter's Office, with solid waste, pretty much just about every department. And so, listening to them and knowing some of the issues they work through, and that we get an opportunity to work with them, too, is a, is a great thing for our office. We, too, like everybody else has said, have worked through COVID. I would say, you know, the challenges that were there. We closed the courts from March up through July first. So, they were closed completely during that time, other than handling lockups. So, obviously, a backlog started to be produced there. We later went to online hearings with Zoom, and so, a lot of stuff going on with IT and working through how we do things and appear in court online was interesting to get used to. And then, we started opening courts back up July through November. And then, when the numbers started increasing again, the courts looked at closing again. And from December up until just yesterday, the courts have been closed for trials. And so, there's a backlog that we're gonna work through in twenty-twenty-one, and that'll be just a part of the process that we have to do. We went to a hybrid method for quite a bit of time, with some people working from home, some people working in the office, and that worked actually very well. We, you know, up to this point, have not had any COVID issues within our office. So, we feel that the county's policies worked very well for making sure that employees were protected. And so, that's just an attribute to what the board and what this county planned as far as making sure to take care of, take care of employees. So, our mission, of course, is to promote justice, public safety, and effective government. We do that through prosecuting crime, through protecting those in need and working with victims, as well as then the important work that we do for providing services to many county agencies that reply on our, or that rely on our legal assistance. There's myself and then eleven other assistants. We have seven women and four men that are attorneys within the office. We have five legal assistants that help keep those individuals all organized every day. We have two front office personnel and three victim service personnel serving victims every day. Our caseloads, by and large, every year, I mean, for the most part, really, you're gonna see some of our numbers have gone down, of course, from two thousand eighteen to nineteen. That, that big leap, I think, as I explained last year, of course, was our change when we went, when we shuttered the city attorney services. And so, that dropped a large portion of just cases that are always worked, you know, they're, they're not heavy trial cases, but they're just a lot of workload and everything. So, that was probably thirteen-hundred cases that year. Again, our numbers are down a little bit, just because there was a period of time when, when the courts were closed. I, I've told people before, you know, that period of time when all the bars closed, you saw a large drop in DWI. I mean, regularly, what we average, six to eight per week, and we had zero for probably two, three weeks for a period of time, which is really almost unheard of for, you know. And now, we're seeing them increasing back up and everything. This year, we had sort of an unprecedented, we averaged pretty much zero to one murders per year. And in March, right as COVID was hitting, we just happened to have five murder cases. We have seven attempted murder cases that happened this year. And so, it's just, I would, I would say largely, it's more or less an anomaly. Usually, what I talk about, and we see increase in crime, where we can see increase in population, and it's something that we deal with, you know, along with law enforcement. But this was a pretty unusual thing. We saw some, you've heard other people talk about, we had a very vicious murder that occurred, and, and the woman was ultimately placed or put into the landfill, and Kirk and his team, and law enforcement had to work to, to find her. And that was a, a good thing, that we ultimately were able to find her and help get that, that matter solved, or still working through the courts currently. We rarely average anywhere between twenty to twenty-five, but some years, up to thirty-five trial, jury, per year. But the courts, because of COVID and having to social distance and make sure that we spread individuals out when they're on jury duty, it's a slower process, a more spread-out process. And because of the restrictions I talked about earlier, we've only had three trials in two thousand twenty. So, there's definitely a backlog that's occurring that we're gonna work through and have to work through in two thousand twenty-one. And then, one of our bigger projects, we in two thousand eighteen went away from paper files. Everything we do is on the computer. We take computers to court, or now, as we sometimes appear online, but everything's digital. And so, we're scanning in all those previous paper files to, to get to a point where we no longer have any even older cases that are, are paper. They're all- older cases that are paper, they're all online. We're obviously very heavily invested in the specialty courts, Drug Court and Veterans Court that you heard Judge Lawson come and talk to. We have been instrumental in starting some of those courts, as well as working weekly within those courts with my staff. Domestic Violence Court, as well as another court that we have. We're exploring the idea of a mental health court. We have a lot of mental health issues that come into court all the time. And there's some specialized issues and things that may help for, just again, having that accountability. Domestic Violence Court gives us a greater level of supervision, ensuring those offenders are complying with the court directives, are not having contact with victims, that type of thing. And then, of course, our specialty courts are really there to help people that have drug problems, mental health problems. We have the opportunity to get them back on track and not have to potentially spend more time in prison. Our Victim Services Department is very active, very busy in helping victims complete restitution, file for reparations, be a go-between between criminal justice professionals such as investigators or our own office, helping them get to court. Another big piece they do is affidavits of loss, which, I mean, obviously, one of our main goals is to try to help victims as best as possible, get to be whole if we can. Sometimes that's monetary. You can see 2020, we had personal affidavits of loss totaling $254,000. We had a big case, elder abuse case, that we got some money back for an individual. And then business affidavits of loss, a lot of businesses that lose money because of burglaries or thefts, and helping them try to become whole as best as possible as well. Our, you can see that the Victim Service Office is obviously extremely busy, continues to be busy with two full-time, one part-time. They serve about 950 victims per year. Contact, phone contact over and over again, personal contact, again, helping them do things such as prepare their victim impact statement if they're going to read something to court, all kinds of things that they work on with those victims. The other piece that Victim Services works on is restorative justice. It's an important program for us, important program for the county. You're really working with juvenile offenders, trying to make sure they understand their place in society, the impact that they have when they commit crimes. Really, one of our best ways is to have the victim offender conferencing, bringing that victim and offender together so that that victim can, or that victim can tell the offender what that impact is to him or her and how much it meant, you know, if something was broken on their property or stolen from them or, or that they were injured and hearing that. Sometimes victims can't bring themselves to do that. They don't want to have that contact. So we have different things, a community conference, bringing in, you know, individuals, groups of people to talk to that offender, tell him or her, you know, what it means or what that impact is when they commit crimes. So there's a lot of reference, referring them from the County Attorney's Office or law enforcement, or we work very closely with the school districts to, to bring, you know, a lot of times it's juvenile on juvenile, victim and offender, bring those together so they can talk and, and learn from each other. You can see just our numbers from there. We had, every, every year we have anywhere between 80, you know, probably, again, those numbers are down maybe a little bit for 2020. We usually have 100, 150. You can see how many were successful, 54 of them, some are still in or pending. And then there are some that are not successful. They ultimately can't get, meet together and meet up, and that happens often. Just finally, some numbers you can see, probably more graphs than you want to see, but obviously, our property crimes continue to go up. You see a lot of thefts. We see a lot of burglaries, welfare fraud within the community. Those are things we're constantly dealing with. So over 140 last year, just in the theft area. Fling's continue to be a problem, as you heard Sheriff Empting talk about, high speeds. We see that just a great deal. More and more people are not afraid to try to evade police, to drive fast. Can be very dangerous, and so we're seeing that more and more. And then criminal damage to property, of course, is just another issue. Personal crimes, like I talked about, from 2018 to 2019, that dip that's there, those didn't go away. They're just being handled by city prosecutors, but our numbers are still there. Largely, they, I would say, within the COVID, a lot of people ask me, oh, did you see a lot more? Because people were home, that kind of thing, you see a lot more domestics or a lot more violence. I mean, our assaults went up some, but largely domestic assaults stayed virtually the same. So didn't really necessarily correlate right with, with COVID, at least for our numbers. DWI crimes, again, the drop is from 18 to 19. Those still exist with the city, but our numbers for the year from 19 to 20 dropped a little bit. And again, I think that was due to those months when, when bars were actually closed. Drug crimes, I think some of those just dropped off, again, because of COVID, not being able to get investigators out for a period of time. You know, they have a lot of contact with people out in the community, and some of that wasn't happening for a period of time. So, so we saw a drop off a little bit on those as well. And then really, lastly, our juvenile crimes, our CHIPS have largely stayed pretty well the same. If you look, and our commitments are virtually the same too. So we're averaging 50 or so a year. And I think you heard from Social Services the other day, it's a, it's a big expense we know we have. It's a big piece that's, it just seems to continue to grow with mental health issues, whether that's in the jail or within social services or within the County Attorney's Office. Those are things that we are constantly dealing with and trying to make sure we get to those people early enough so that we don't get to the point where there's crimes and other problems that exist with it. With that said, I think my only other thing I wanted to say, if I didn't say it earlier, you know, the, with COVID, but one of the most rewarding pieces of this year, I guess I would say, is being able to work on the CARES Committee and what this board did within the CARES Act side of things, not only helping business, but helping all the many underserved areas such as homeless people, immigrant families, elderly, people with mental health issues, all those care dollars that went and worked towards helping all those people was definitely a big piece that this board was responsible for doing and helping the community. And then as well as helping the taxpayers with things that we did, I think will go a long way for a long time. And, and I would just say, you know, when you're working on a lot of those things, the, the speed that we are working in was, was a very interesting thing. Sometimes government's a little bit slow. We did a lot of work in a very truncated period of time, but a lot of important work. And so I think that goes to this board's and the other community, the other leaders that were on that committee. So that was a very valuable thing. I'm open to any questions.
Brian, just for the public too, you, you talked a little bit about the civil side of, of your office. And, and I don't know just how much the public is aware on, on how many things our county board has to have your office review. You know, there's a, there's a tremendous amount of over, or, or, you know, review in terms of contracts and all those types of things. And, and we're fortunate that we have a department that works so closely. And oftentimes, we, we come across things that have to be acted on fairly quickly, and your office is right there to, to review them. And, and that's, that's very much appreciated on our part. I, I do want to mention, I'm really anxious to hear more about this mental health court. You know, when we look at, at the statistics from the Drug Court and those things and, and the improvement it's made on lives, I'm just, I'm anxious to hear how this Drug Court can be another tool in helping those folks that may end up incarcerated as a result of mental health issues when there's probably better ways to do that. So I'm, I'm, I'm really anxious to hear more about that. I know you're kind of in the planning phase of it, but I think, I think our entire board will be anxious to hear how we can help in, in establishing that.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I, I think that's going to be a very important piece or another piece. And I think, like we talked about, when Judge Lawson and, and the Drug Court team were here, the Specialty Court team, you know, it's, it's not a, this isn't something that just gets people over. I mean, it's a, it's a very labor-intensive or very intensive program that, that holds these individuals accountable, helps them as far as making sure they've got a job or getting their education, finding housing. You know, so that's why we, you know, the Drug Court and Veterans Court. And when you look at the Mental Health Court, so St. Louis County and Duluth already have one established. We've viewed theirs and watched theirs, and like you said, we're mostly in the planning stage at this point. But you can see a lot of times how mental health and drugs, a lot of times people have mental health issues and, and sicknesses will self-medicate, and so it just compounds itself. And then they're committing crimes to, whether that's to get more drugs or because they're not even really understanding stuff that they're doing. And so it, a lot of it can be combined in and of itself, but a lot of those mental health issues potentially even get some services, treatment, medication to those individuals, help them get, again, get back on track so they're not potentially committing crimes. Again, it, it's financially, it makes sense. It makes sense just on a social fabric level of keeping individuals out of, out of jail potentially or prison and getting to them before they're committing crimes. So, yeah, I think it'll be a good, good thing for the community, a good thing for, for court services as we establish it.
Well, as you move forward with that, be sure you come back and give us updates on that.
We will.
I think I can speak for our board that will be very interested in that. Thank you, Brian.
Anybody else have questions or comments? Commissioner Mojo.
I appreciate the fact that you brought up the CARES piece because you were really helpful. Your entire department were with all of the work that was done there, so thank you. But also, as the member on this board that serves on the Planning Commission, it is very helpful to have a member of your staff attend those meetings and continue to help as we move through with the various permitting and applications that we see. So thank you for allowing to have a presence there as well.
Thank you, yeah, absolutely. Yeah, again, another, there's just so many, you know, planning is very much an important one that we have. And Caitlin now is there and doing a great job, so.
All right, and you, and no doubt you have the best staff, right?
And I have the best staff, without question. So I'll take, I'll fight Kirk for that, so. Thank you all.
Thank you, Brian. Okay, next, we have a request to fill an upcoming vacancy for the Technology Services Director. We have our administrator, Steve Larson, here. Good morning, Steve.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. We had a little bit of a heads up that this may be coming, but doesn't make it any less bittersweet. Tim Dend did announce that he's going to be retiring May, May 7th of this year. He's been with Clay County for over 30 years. And through that process, really has developed a, a department which is, is recognized throughout the state as one of the strongest. And so certainly, his leadership has been extremely important to, to that department. Part of the hope of him providing a resignation as early as he had, would to be get, hopefully, provide the opportunity to get someone on as quickly as possible and potentially offer, offer an opportunity to have some overlap. We met this past week with a PIC department, or PIC committee. And that PIC committee is requesting that this board, that they be allowed to act as the hiring committee with the ultimate, ultimate decision being brought forward to you as a full board for, with that recommendation. And so with that, I would yield for any questions.
Commissioner Mojo.
Just a comment, I, I know that this board will be reluctant to see Tim go. He really has been a huge asset to Clay County. But particularly, once everything moved virtual for Clay County because of COVID, that department really pivoted, they stepped up and really met the challenge. And, and so it will be sad to see Tim go, but I know he's got some exciting things planned. So I will make a motion to approve the recommendation to fulfill the vacant, or fill the vacancy and also allow the PIC committee to act as a hiring committee.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Mojo, second by Commissioner Ebbinger.
I have a question. Do we need, should that motion include backfill approval for backfill, if necessary?
Sure, yeah, it should.
I'll allow the motion to reflect that.
Very good. That meets your second. I want to echo what Commissioner Mojo said too. And during the pandemic, you know, what, with the, with the help of, of Tim, what we've learned to do is probably in the future, different ways to operate, even over and above, beyond just this period of time of COVID, that, you know, maybe some remote work might be something that's in our interest to continue. And, and it's with that work that Tim helped do that has shown the ability to do that, so. All right, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carried. Next, we have a request from Derek Garing to waive penalties for fees, late fees on taxes. And we did receive a letter, and Nancy, welcome this morning. And by the way, Board, I just learned this week that this is Nancy's last week with us. And, and she's obvious, she's obviously excited about that. But I, I, I want to take this opportunity, before we get in this, to, to thank you for all your years of service and, and. Yeah, it's been nice being able to work with you over these years, so. All right, so now we can, yeah. Okay, so we have this.
Come back and visit, I know you're really going to miss.
Look at that grin on your face. Okay, so do we, is Tara on it with us at all or anything?
No.
Okay, all right, well, we did receive the letter. You know, I certainly, you know, one of the, one of the things back when we gave the criteria for being able to come before the board, obviously, when we originally set those criteria, we did not include COVID because COVID didn't exist. And I, you know, I think, my personal belief is, is that, that this should fall in line with, with what we've been doing. And I would certainly support her request to have those penalties waived.
Mr. Chair, I would make a motion to approve the request to waive the penalties.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Mojo, second from Commissioner Kaylee.
Mr. Chair, I, I think to make sure that we have the numbers correct, I believe the total is $295.85?
Correct.
Okay, my motion would include that.
All right, very good. All right. Do we have any further discussion?
Have there been arrangements made to pay that, or is that?
The $295.85 would be waived, and there still is a balance of $952, but I understand she's willing to pay that as soon as this is done.
Do we have to put a time limit on that, or?
I think she's willing to take care of it right away.
Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carried, and you will notify her then.
Thanks.
Good luck in your, have fun in your retirement. She just rushed out of here.
Peace out.
That's probably her last official duty right there.
Good for her.
All right, so we will take a five-minute break. We were right on time, aren't we? You guys are, or, Justin, if you guys are ready to get rolling, we can get back in session here. And our next item is, Highway, Highway Department has a couple of items. And the first one is a Resolution 2021-19 for a local road improvement grant. Do you want to talk about that, Dave?
Right, these, this is a grant that came out that's been getting all kinds of excitement throughout the state and particularly in our county. There's different pots of money for this grant. This came through the bonding bill last year. There's, I believe, kind of three, three set aside candidate applicants. There's the trunk highways that, you know, obviously were not eligible. There's county, there's a county set aside amount of dollars, and then there's small cities and townships. Is that correct, Justin? So there's, you know, the small cities and the townships, that's where we've been bringing all these requests that we, and we need to sponsor those. And primarily, the reason we sponsor those applicants, their applications, is so that we make sure that the funding is done correctly and all the stated requirements are done according to stated rules. But we also have been fortunate, and we, we always apply to as a, as a candidate for these type of opportunities. We received several of, of these in the past. The most recent one was a paving project on County Road 10 in the area of Downer and towards Saban there. There was an area that, there's a lot of gravel that comes from out east there, and there was a lot of rutting that was very severe. And we replaced some of that, all that asphalt a few years ago with his very same dollars in a different bill. So the project that we would like to bring forward is on County Road 18. It's a couple miles north of US Highway 10. north of US Highway 10, north of Glendon. It's on our five-year plan currently, and it's a road that's probably in the nature of 40, 50 years old or so. It's kind of, it's in two sections. The section, a couple miles on the west have gravel shoulders and very distressed roadway, as well as it's starting to really crack off. And even some of the white edgeline has got issues out there as far as cracking, so it's in dire need. The two and a half miles or so on the east side does have paved shoulders. It's a little bit newer section, but nonetheless, it sees a lot of traffic. We've got all kinds of farming, major farming out there. I did provide a map, I think, to the commissioners. It wasn't in your packet, but we brought it in today so you could see just a little visual where it is. It is kind of a direct route right into the American Crystal Sugar Beet Plant there. A lot of, on the very east side there, just a little bit further east would be the Spring Prairie Precast, Precast Colony that are providing, I heard they've got work for 10 years, so they're not going anywhere anytime soon. It's a direct route for a lot of the students to go to the DGF school system as well. So it's got about 1,308 cars per day. It's a six-mile project, and I don't know if anyone has any questions, but I just feel it'd be a really good project. I think it, it meets a lot of the criteria for the routes of regional significance. Do you have anything further to add on our candidate project?
I think you touched on it really well.
Yeah, so we just did not too long ago, that we did the five miles to the west of there from Iowa 75 to where you're talking about, correct?
Right.
Correct.
So, yeah, I think it's a good, and so what, what was the dollar amount that we had in our five-year plan for that?
Between 1.4 and 1.5 million.
What's, what's nice about this is if, if we're successful in this local road improvement grant, it'll free up that money within our five-year plan to potentially use for other projects. So this, that's, it's just another plus if we were able to get this, so.
Absolutely, yeah. The max grant amount is 1.2 million. That would just be fantastic. We could do more work in other areas of the county than need it.
Yeah, like 15th. Okay. Okay, so that's, yeah, that's, I think it's an excellent opportunity for us here to, let's see. I know we talked about it on Highway Tracking Committee, and we certainly endorse the application for, for that.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the Resolution 2021-19.
Second the motion.
Thank you. We have a motion by Commissioner Gross, second by Commissioner Mojo. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign. Motion carried. And next, we have the approval of the annual township maintenance contract numbers for 2021, 2022. Dave, can you, for our new commissioners, can you just briefly talk about that, that five-year lookback period that we do in determining this, so that?
Right. So the way the numbers, the way the numbers are calculated out, you always look back one year in particular. So these numbers for the contract, starting July 1st of '21 through June 30th of '22, are based on the actual expenditures in 2020. And we basically, every, every time a snowplow or a mortar grader does any work on a township system, they code their time in that individual day. At the end of the year, all those hours that are done on the township system are added together in that year and then utilized for the contract. So the one thing we notice is if there's a year with 80, 90 inches of snow, all of a sudden, the snow plowing is probably the most expensive work that we do. It's just, it's very costly, and if we have a bad snow season, the contract goes up. If it's a light snow season, the contract could go down. And what we were seeing was, one year we'd have a rate of around 500, 600, and the next year it would be 800, 900. And the townships were having a really hard time trying to budget for this. So we came up, and I believe Commissioner Campbell probably came up with this idea, and it came through our, our meetings to take a five-year average. That way it just kept everything constant. So like this year in particular, in 2015, we had about a $680 year that went off the five-year average, and we added this current year of 813 that got added in. So, you know, it kind of just goes up and down. Some years, with the five-year average, you actually charge more than the actual costs are, but then it balances, because there's years where you'll actually charge less than, you know, than the costs are. So it does really balance out. We've had nothing but positive feedback on it. They really like it. It's a lot easier for them to budget on their annual basis. And it, it's very time-consuming for our accountant. She does a fantastic job, and has about, I don't know, maybe a month, month and a half to put this all together. And then what we do is we try to meet early in February at the Highway Committee, and then like last, so last Tuesday after this meeting, we met with the Highway Committee, went over the numbers, and then two days later, we brought the townships in, and we had a little discussion here to talk about the numbers when we rolled it out to them. And then a couple days later, we bring it to the board for approval. That's been our process for seven, eight, nine years, something like that. So it's, it's worked out really well. You know, we have, we've got all the history on where the numbers are, and it's interesting to look back, even seven, eight, nine, 10 years ago, there was numbers in the $700, $800 range back then on some of the bad years, so.
So the, the number this year, the actual price increase per mile this year for the townships is how much?
$38 per mile from last year. And a lot of that has to do with that five-year average. I think without the five-year average, it would have been 850 or 860, something like that. So it, it actually did go down a little bit from, from what the actual costs are.
Well, this again, we talked about this on the Highway Tracking and certainly support it. And, and by the way, Ann does do a tremendous job, and, and she basically told us, don't you even think about changing that formula. So, so she likes it as well, even though it's worked for her, but it's a pretty fair way for all those townships, so.
Yeah, we discussed this at the Highway Tracking meeting, and also I attended the meeting with the townships the other day, and they seemed to be pretty much in agreement with this. I mean, I don't think there was any, anybody questioning the increase. So I make a motion, we approve this.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Gross.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Ebbinger. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, the same sign. Motion carried. Next, we have an adoption of the Resolution Grant Agreement for the Bridge Replacement in County Route 68, SAP 014-598-072.
We did put a little yellow dot on the map that we handed out. You can kind of see that's where County Bridge 68 is. Maybe I'll let Justin, if he wants to go through the grant agreement a little bit. This is the way it rolls out from the state. It used to be a one-pager, now it's about a 10-pager, but there's a lot more legal language in these agreements.
Yeah, so we did receive bridge bonding for the project that Dave mentioned. It is for the amount of $530,337.34. And as part of MINDOT's process, you have to approve both a grant agreement and a resolution. We did open bids on February 9th, and Garrett Hanson Contracting was the low bidder.
So we will receive a little over $530,000 of bridge bond dollars for this, which is significant. When we replace little wooden bridges with box culverts, we'll get anywhere the nature of 100 to $150,000, and we do quite a few of those. This is an actual real bridge itself, and it took a while to get these dollars because there wasn't bridge bond dollars for a couple years. It was kind of a, they, you know, went back and forth between the House and the Senate, and they chose not to have bonding. But we got a pretty significant amount of bridge bond dollars, which is really, you know, completely above and beyond our gas tax dollars, our local levy dollars that we set aside for transportation. This is a really good program. That's why I always preach that I love our bridge bond program. It works really well. But it's nice when it's fairly consistent, you know, when they put 40 to 60 million dollars every other year in there, that gives us a little better mechanism for consistently replacing our bridges.
Mr. Chair, knowing, I've, I've seen this bridge. In fact, instead of throwing rocks off the bridge, you can throw it through the holes through the bridge. So I would certainly make a motion to approve the resolution and grant agreement.
Okay. All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Mojo, second by Commissioner Gross. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, the same. Motion carried. And finally, you have an approval for a signed quote for purchase of fire number signs.
Right. We did come to the board, I believe it did go through consent agenda on the 9th to replace stops and yields. Well, shortly after that, we did borrow a reflectometer, and we went out and checked some of those signs, and their condition was a little better than we had thought, even after 13 years. So we thought, well, rather than replacing signs that still have a lot of life left in them, we decided our next, our next option was to take a look at the blue, well, and we had been looking at the blue fire numbers. So what I'd like to do today is, I'd request a, a signed quote for 1,350 blue, the blue fire numbers, and like, I, I think it makes a lot more sense to go down that direction to replace some of these that are there, rather than the stops and yields that, that have life. We are going to continually test on an annual basis what we, what we call control signs. So we're going to pick out a certain amount of signs, you know, some face north, some face south, so we get a good kind of a cross-section out there. And once we notice these signs are needing a replacement, we'll come back with a request that year. But what we'd like to do is change gears a little bit in 2021 and replace some of the, I think there's a little over 4,000 of these, is that correct?
Yep.
We got a lot of work to do. They, they came into existence probably in about 1998, 1999, and they used to kind of go through the GIS department because Mark's the one that kind of sets up what the addresses actually are when people build a house, or when they put the actual 911 system together. So then all of a sudden, all these signs got put up out there. And initially, I think they used like Boy Scout groups, used the rural fire departments, and all 4,000 signs got put up, and now 20 years later, it's like, who's going to replace them? So we kind of had to put together a plan on how to do it. And, you know, they're, they're not quite as important as stops and yields, but they're important. And we had to figure out how with our normal workload, we're going to fit this in. And kind of weirdly enough, it worked out okay that we could slip them in this year, and we'll push the stops and yields back until they're ready.
You have a request before you.
A motion approved.
Second.
A motion by Commissioner Gross, second by Commissioner Mojo. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, the same. Motion carried. Thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
Justin?
Well, did you want to say road restrictions? Did you want a quick?
Right, we did just get the word yesterday from the state, and, and they are, the Agency of Office of Materials is who designates when restrictions come on. And we did just find out yesterday that, I believe it's Friday at midnight, so Friday morning at midnight, road restrictions south of US 10 are coming on. So it's kind of surprising how quickly they can come on. I don't think there was an awful lot of frost in the ground, but, so Clay County is split right in half by US 10 in two different frost zones. And sometimes they come on and come off together, sometimes they don't. So anyway, Friday at midnight, road restrictions are coming on south of US 10.
Is there a public announcement to that?
I think, no, not really. A lot of people are, they probably get on that email list, and that's where we get them. So I would guess some of the haulers are probably part of that list, and they get the automatic emails, but.
That's what I was wondering.
I think the contractors are.
Right. We will, we'll put it on our website as well to try to notify anyone that may look on there. And I, I let a few people know, and I feel like it, it kind of gets out from there.
Thank you. Okay, next we have some more of the Social Service Department updates, and we have, Rhonda is here again, and we have Financial Assistance Division with Larry Young, Minnesota Rural SEP, and we have Child Support Fraud and Corrections with Sandy.
Yeah, she's going to take over for me when I, just after I give a brief.
Okay.
So good morning.
And then we have Teresa, too, correct? Okay. All right, Rhonda, good morning.
Good morning. This is the second part of our three-part presentation in terms of our department overview. So thank you for allowing us to have this time on the agendas over the next few weeks. Today, we're going to talk about our Financial Services Division, which Larry supervises. And we have a large contract with Rural Minnesota SEP for our employment services for families on EMFIP and food support. And so Teresa Haysman is going to talk a little bit about what happens when those families get referred to SEP. And then Sandy will talk a bit about her Child Support Fraud and Collections Unit. And then next week, you will hear from our Child Protection Divisions. And so with that, we will have gone through our department. In the spirit of competition, I'd like to say you've already heard this twice this morning, but I think we have the best staff.
And I'm sure Commissioner Gross is going to make that motion.
So, wanted to just put that. Okay, so I'm going to just turn it over right away to Larry. I did pass out the PowerPoint, so you do have that as well, and it's up on the screen. So take it away, Larry.
Good morning, Larry.
Thank you. Good morning. My name's Larry Young. I'm the supervisor at the Financial Services Division at Clay County. I have 27 staff that I supervise, three leads, which are basically the experts of our family programs, our adult programs, and, and healthcare program. And the remaining 24 are spread out amongst those programs accordingly. Up on the screen right now is a list of all the programs that we administer and work with for the public. The following screens that I will be showing you will be a little bit more in-depth discussion on those specific programs. So the first one we have is Minnesota Family Investment Program, EMFIP. This is a program for our families of children that need cash or food stamp, or food assistance. It's a combination of both those benefits within that grant. There's a 60-month limit on people that can receive EMFIP unless they get to their 60th month, and they have an extension reason or exemption where they allow them to go further than 60 months. We meet with SEP. SEP gets a referral from our, our staff when we have somebody that enters this program, and then SEP works on the employment aspect of it, of helping them find a job. And then we work with SEP as well on about their 48th month to try to talk to the individual to see if they're going to meet an exemption or extension reason when they get to their 60th month, and if not, to kind of have a plan of what their, their action plan will be after they get to that point. You see, you see the numbers have increased, and you'll see that a little bit in every one of our programs, that in 2020, we did see an increase in volumes. This, this is a caseload breakdown of an average per month that we had in each of these years. In 2020, we had an increase, obviously, because of COVID, that people were not working, and they needed to come and get cash assistance through EMFIP. There was even an option for people that if they had met their exemption, again, because people needed some type of cash assistance, they were allowed to come in and apply for cash assistance, even if they had met their exemption. There wasn't a lot of turnover in any of our programs. I mean, we, we have a lot of coming and going off of our programs every year. But this year, because of COVID, there was, we weren't closing any one, so our numbers pretty much stayed stable throughout the year.
Mr. Chair, I have a question.
Yes, go ahead.
Thanks, Larry. In the 48th month, is that a date that's required in statute, or is that just a date that we've determined?
Statute.
Okay. Certainly, we, can you go before that at all to start the conversations?
Well, I think we always have. I mean, with SEP, we do have that discussion to try to figure out what their plan would be once they get to the 40, 60th month.
Okay.
Our, our goal is, our responsibility is to have a case review and a discussion somewhere between that 48th and 60th month to, to make sure that we have a.
And I guess my, my thought is that would it be beneficial to have those conversations earlier to help? I mean, we have enough agencies out there that we could connect them with. Is there any way we could look at moving that up just to help the process? But certainly, if you, having those discussions with SEP.
We can, yes, we can definitely look at that. I mean, we're, we're required at the 48th month to have it, and, and I can discuss with Teresa, and Teresa probably already will at, talk about that during her discussion, that we have discussions with her case managers on a database, or a weekly basis already.
One thing that maybe if I can suggest as you go through your updates, and Rhonda, maybe you can let everybody else know, is I don't know of any department that has more acronyms than, than there are in Social Services.
Yes.
And I, you know, and I, you know, I think, I think for the benefit of, of both our listening audience and our new commissioners, maybe as we first talk about this stuff, we can maybe give a description of these acronyms as to what we're talking about.
Absolutely. As a Minnesota Family Investment Program is what the EMFIP is, is, is the program.
FPG is what?
FPG is Federal Poverty Guidelines.
There you go, okay.
Thank you. The next program that we will be talking about is the Diversionary Work Program, which is the GWP. This one, you see that there was a Program, which is DWP. This one, you see that there was a sharp decrease in 2020's numbers. And that was because diversionary work program is focuses more on the work aspect. If somebody has been off of EMFIP for 12 months, and they come on and they want to apply for Minnesota Family Investment Program, we look at diversionary work program to get them. It's a four-month program that allows them to have a fast, the months don't count towards the 60 months that we use. And they get referred to SEP as well to work on employment services. They, the state put a moratorium or a freeze on putting people on DWP once the COVID started because their main focus was work, and it was hard for people to find jobs. So that was how we took away from that program. General Assistance, that is our GA program. And this is a program that if a person brings in a medical opinion form or a doctor's statement for us that says they're unable to work, they can apply for this cash program that will allow them to get $203 a month in cash benefits. And, and they have to continue to, if we get a medical opinion form, if it says they can't work for six months, we would need another form after five months, probably, to look to see if they were still eligible for general assistance. GA also has a program called GA Personal Needs, which is $104 a month that is usually given to someone that's living in an adult foster home or some type of facility where they have to have personal needs. And so that $104 is allotted through the GA program, or basically, it also works as if they had income, that it would be deducted from the income that they have to pay for their, their lodge or room and board, that they would keep the $104 as personal needs allowance.
If someone is employed and can't work, and if they have sick leave and stuff like, say, you have two, three months of sick leave, can they get on this program before their sick leave is used up, or?
No, I mean, if they're general assistants, if they're receiving income, and they would be receiving income if they had sick leave, I'm assuming, and we would count that income towards this grant. And so if they're making more than $203, they, they wouldn't be eligible for any general assistance. So it will be just the sick leave amount of money that they're getting, and maybe be eligible for food stamps or SNAP.
Larry, just to follow up too. So are there any other financial considerations that, that are looked at for an app? So I guess what I'm wondering is if somebody is temporarily out of work, they can qualify for this. But what if they have a half million dollars in the bank?
Well, there is an asset limit, obviously.
Okay.
Yes, there are, are asset limits for all of our programs, except for cash, or SNAP, I mean.
Yeah.
Or medical assistance, some, some of the medical assistance program.
But I, but I think that's important.
Yes.
People to know that.
We, we do take an application and, and look at all the assets and any
So there are other financial things you look at besides just them not working?
Yeah, yeah.
Good, good.
Alrighty. MSA, Minnesota Supplemental Assistance. This is a program that is available to people generally if they're on supplemental security income, which is SSI, that's run through social security. It is a state-funded program that basically is a supplement, as the title says, to allow them to get additional money. It's generally an $81 a month grant that's added on to their SSI that they're getting from social security. Those numbers, again, are, are staying pretty, pretty even. We, we took a big increase a couple of years ago, but the last three years have been pretty, pretty equal, not, not a lot of changes. Housing Support. Housing Support, which is formerly called GRH, which was Group Residential Housing, this is a cash program that allows for room and board for people that are on any adult foster home, CD, mental health facilities that need to have to pay for this. We've seen a huge increase or an increase in this program, where again, with this program, they apply for this benefit. They have income, the income is determined as their portion of what they have to pay. So it's up $934 is what the housing support grant is. And if I am making income, earned income, unemployment or unemployment under an income from social security, that goes into the equation that says this is their portion of what they're going to have to pay towards that $934. Which then is where that $904 that I said a little bit ago about GA Personal Needs, that, that of their income, they get to keep $104 of that. Otherwise, then the state pays, they might pay $600, and then the state would pay $234 towards the room and board. We've seen, and like I said, an increase in this. I think a lot of, of, some of our scattered sites that we've started with long-term homeless a few years ago, where it was allowing individuals to move out of long-term homelessness into apartments that were provided support. So the room and board was being paid. And again, if they, the goal was to work them towards finding some type of employment or to get them on social security, and then they would pay a portion of their income for their room and board.
I'll go back on one question again we had before there. On checking on assets, are you allowed to check on assets? I mean, if I go in and apply, and I say, I got $10,000 in the bank, and I have $50,000 in the bank, are you allowed to check those assets, or?
Yes, we are. I mean, if they tell, if they, we will verify everything that they tell us that they had. And then there's also a new system called AVS. And I apologize with the acronyms that you've said. I've used too many of them, and I can't, it's Asset Verification System. There we go.
I'm not saying you use too many, it's just we need to know what they are.
It just, it just popped in my head. AVS was Acid Verification System. So if a person is, comes in and applies for most of our programs, we then run a background, so to speak, into this system that says, okay, if I told you only I had one bank account, but all of a sudden, the system is going to see that I have four bank accounts, then we would look into it a little bit further to get some verification that, why did you tell me you only had one? And, and we would look at the balance of those other accounts.
That's where Sandy comes in, huh?
Ultimately, yes. I mean, we, we do this, this research or looking into this AVS system initially, so that it, only about a 10-day turnaround that allows them to verify if I have more accounts than what I have reported to. So yes, assets, assets and income are reported and discussed at every application that we have for all of our programs.
Thank you.
Commissioner Mosel?
How did the additional unemployment amount change things? Is that added into the equation, the $300 extra? I mean, it was more, but now it's three?
It, it's, it's varied. I mean, again, it varied with our programs. I mean, that's the uniqueness of all, of our programs that we have, is that some of them, we counted that extra $300.
Right.
State's direction was we need to count that. In other programs, we didn't.
Okay.
It allowed, I mean, yes, it helped a lot of people that didn't need to come in and get benefits from us. But again, if we were only counting 300 of the $600, they were still
It was more, more of a curiosity from my perspective to ask that. But I, I'm also curious, and maybe it's confidential, so that's fine. But if, did you observe that extra unemployment amount, was it helpful? I mean, in the cases that, that you were working with, that, that additional piece, did you see folks not coming in because it was helpful? Is that an unfair question?
Well, it's not an, I mean, no, I mean, I, to give you a good answer, as our numbers changed dramatically, I, I don't, like I said, the fact that some of the programs, it didn't matter if they got that extra $300 or they were getting unemployment, because they were eligible still because of not counting portions of it. So it, it helped, and I mean, it, it helped. The moratoriums, we're going to talk a little bit about emergency assistance programs and that a little bit further down. It's helped people for some of our programs, and probably not so much for others.
Thank you.
Just, just a reminder, too, most of these programs you're talking about are either federal or state programs that are paid for by the federal or state, and the county administers those on their behalf.
Yes.
And some of what you do, then, the county then is also able to apply for and receive some funding for cost sharing of those expenses. Rhonda's nodding her head, maybe. Yes. But I guess I just want, I want the public to be aware of that, and I want our new commissioners to be aware of that, 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 that's how the funding on these things work.
Yes.
And they may know that. I don't know what all they do know right now and what they don't know. But there's an awful lot, you know, when I was a new commissioner, there was a lot to learn, and there still is a lot to learn.
This is what we are here for, to try to, any, any questions you might have. Because yes, it's, it's, it's an interesting program, all of our programs, because of the differences in how we administer, and different rules. But yes, most, most, all funding is, like you'd said, through the state and federal.
All right, why don't you proceed?
I will keep going. SNAP, which is the Supplemental Security Nutrition Assistance Program. This is what we used to call food stamps. It is a food benefit for people that meet our income and asset guidelines. There was an increase over the last year again because of, of people that were losing their jobs and coming in and applying for, for the benefits, so. Childcare Assistance. So we have a childcare assistance program. Right now, we have one and a quarter workers in my office that does our childcare. We've, we've seen a decrease in the numbers over the years. I'm not exactly completely confident on, on why that is. A big part of it is, is the rules, and, and sometimes the income guidelines don't change as fast as cost of living changes for all of us. And so we might have earned more money, but the guidelines are smaller than, than, so people aren't eligible for it. And also with this childcare program, there's two, there's different criteria in this childcare where there's an admissions asset limit, which is a very low dollar amount that you have to even be eligible for or under be eligible for childcare. And then, once you're eligible, then the income guideline changes for eligibility amount. So I can earn as little as just $20,000, for instance, on, to be eligible to get in. And if I fall under that criteria, I can become eligible for childcare assistance. And then the next standard is a little bit higher, so that I could be out working and still remain eligible for medical or childcare. Generally, childcare assistance doesn't pay for the full amount of childcare that a family needs. So if they take their kids to any childcare, it, we try to make it quite clear that what we're going to provide, or what the program will provide, is a portion of the childcare assistance. And then there's co-pay that goes along with that as well. So any questions on, on that? Medical Assistance, ME. We've seen a spike in that as well over this last year, people losing employment because of that, lost their medical assistance. This works through our state MAXS system, which is a system that's been around for an awful long time, that computes all of our programs. We have some people that are still receiving medical assistance through the MAXS system. But a large majority of this number is on people that are on MinSure or Mets, which is the new, or the healthcare program that was developed five, or seven years ago, I believe it was. So. That, again, all of those programs, we do have asset and income guidelines that we look at in the application. County Burials. There wasn't a huge increase from last year, which was good to see that we didn't have an increase in numbers of deaths and that needed county burials. Most of our funeral homes in the area know our policy. We have so much per cremation and, and services that we can pay. And then there's breakdown of other costs that a family might need that they discuss with the funeral homes. So they come in and they apply at the funeral home, or they contact the funeral home. Generally, then the funeral home either already puts numbers together of what it might cost for a county burial, or they send them over to our office with an application for county burial assistance. And, and then we would pay the money directly to the funeral home once we get the, the statement from them. We, we've changed a little bit. The last cost, it used to be a few years ago, that we would look at what any assets that the family had. Sometimes the family didn't know when they came in and applied. I didn't know, I wouldn't know what my mom and dad, my, my mom had for assets. And so if I came in and applied, it was really hard for us to ever be sure of that. And so then collections would go after, or we would contact collections, and they would be looking at any of those assets. But it also, at, at a point a couple of years ago, we looked at it and said, okay, if I had, or my mom had $1,000 in her account, we're going to subtract that from whatever the county burial bill is. And then unfortunately, it was the, the funeral home's responsibility to collect the $1,000 from myself, and then they receive the rest from us. And so we had a discussion a few years back with the county here, that it was decided that we were going to pay the full amount, and the collections would go and, and look to see what that $1,000 that I had would be collected to offset the cost of the county burial. Next one is Emergency General Assistance. This is a program for emergency, for shut-offs or evictions, for people with, that are single adults that are in the household. This is a program that is state-funded, that our, our allotment runs from July through June of every year. So we put, the state puts an amount into our budget every, or into our system every year for us to use for emergency assistance in this program, for the Emergency General Assistance. We've seen a decrease in this program, and we're going to see a huge decrease in our emergency assistance that will follow. A big part of that is the state had federal Community Action Program here in town, had a Housing Assistance Program that they were administering monies out to people that came in and had eviction notices, shut-off notices, mortgage, fallen behind for whatever reason. So a lot of money was paid through that program that kept them from coming into our office asking for help. So that's why we, we had a, a decrease in the amount of money that was spent. I think, again, with both EGA, or Emergency General Assistance, and the EA program that's coming up next, we're going to see probably a spike in that once the moratoriums or anything does change, where evictions can be given and, and shut-off notices can be given. So that, that will be, that'll be some change in our policy. And I think the amount of applications that we're going to be getting coming forward. So the next one is Family Emergency Assistance. This is money that is put into this system through the Minnesota, or the EMFIP. through the Minnesota, or the EMFIP consolidated plan that Rhonda and I, we submit to the state every two years. So there's an amount out of that EMFIP consolidated plan that is put specifically for this emergency assistance, which is for people that are, have children in the household. So if they came in and they haven't received emergency assistance, all of our programs require that they have not received emergency assistance in the last 12 months. So if they come in and, and they meet the criteria that we have of how much income they may have received in the last two months, that they've met a certain percentage of that amount on the room and board, and that it's cost effective, then we use this money. Again, so far, this is a calendar year budget and we have not used a whole lot here in 2020, or did not in 2020, where again was because a lot of people were going to CAP LP to, to get assistance from them.
Lakes and Prairies. Or Lakes and Prairies Community Action.
I'm sorry.
No, it's hard. I get it.
Yes. All right. Thank you.
All right.
Next slide. Work, so the bottom portion of our, of that screen is a breakdown of our, we have a caseload, three workers currently right now, which is the long-term care programs, which is anyone over the age of 65 goes under, under these three workers and anyone in a nursing home, even if they're below the age of 65, or if they're in a nursing home, is administered by this group of people, that staff that I have. As it indicates there, one, one of our concerns for our workload challenge is currently I have one staff that works in this program. It's, I think is reached her 42nd or 41st year of employment here, so has a wide variety of knowledge. Another one, about 17 or 18 years. They're both threatening to me that they're going to be retiring soon. And so there's the concern of the increase of baby boomers and people that are getting to this age group. There's more of a need for that. The other workload and problems, challenges that I see in our unit is, right now, we can't really remove anyone from any of our benefits. They, the state has put a lot of waivers into place that basically says we need to make sure everyone's safe, that they're getting their cash benefits, they're getting their healthcare. And so if they provide us information, sometimes in some of the programs, we can make some changes, but they're not getting recertifications, they're not getting any monthly report from us or documents from us asking for information. And if they don't provide it to us, they keep their benefits. And so I think, once the healthcare emergency or governor, the governor ends this, we've been told we were going to have about a 60-day window of time that the state's then going to figure out how we're going to change those waivers and, and how those waivers are going to affect everyone that's receiving benefits. And getting the word out, getting the word out from us and, and, and the state to provide to say, okay, now you haven't received or haven't needed to turn in a recertification form or anything to update anything, but now, now you will. And so there will be a huge increase, I think, in, in that and also with the anticipation of the moratorium for shut-offs and eviction notices. We, we haven't used a lot for emergency assistance yet, but I see that changing dramatically as the year goes on. We're hoping to still, again, hea- healthcare is, is a program that continues to increase in our, in my group. So it's, it's kind of on a wish list to see if we can, and it, and it's a program that we need to continue to work hard on in, in all of our programs to make sure that benefits are being provided accurately and, and everything. So yes, most application, all applications can be done, paper form, call in our office, we can send them out. There's a new application system that's being developed. We thought it was supposed to start today and heard yesterday that it wasn't. But it's a program that's called MNbenefits.org, which will be a program that people can go on and apply for all of our programs except for medical assistance, which will be very good benefit for all of our people, everyone, to not have to come in 20 different questions and it computes onto an application and then it gets submitted to us to process. So that, that's hopefully going to be something that's going to be coming down the pike real soon, so. Any questions? I think I've done my part to make it as difficult or confusing as possible. I apolo- I apo- I apologize for yes. But certainly, if you have any questions, certainly let me know. Teresa's now going to speak. Like I had mentioned, with our family programs, we contract with Rural Minnesota SEP to help with the employment aspects of people that are on EMFIP and the EFP. So I will let Teresa take it over.
Okay. Is this on?
You should sew green if it's on.
Okay.
Make sure you get close to your mic.
I know, I was trying to keep social distance.
You can move, they're portable. You can move the mic.
No, I'm good. I'm just teasing. Okay. So with Rural Minnesota SEP, we do provide services for a 19-county area throughout the state of Minnesota. And if you're interested in that, I have the map of it on our dislocated worker that shows where we all provide services at. And we do have a contract that goes on with Clay County Social Services and we update that every two years also. We get state and federal funds out of the EMFIP program and those federal funds are TANF, the Temporary Aid to Need families. And just a little history on that is it became implemented in 1996 and that's where a lot of the mandatory programs came. And then with EMFIP, they've added additional categories of eligibility at the state level for that program. So right now, we have six job counselors and those job counselors at this time, half of them are working from home and half of them are working in the office. So the way we've done business now has definitely changed than it did last year. The applicants that we work with are those that apply for benefits such as the SNAP program, your cash assistance programs, they are eligible for employment services. And we consider that a partnership. And so when you think about the services that families get, part of that partnership is with the participant. We want them to be working with us, the eligibility worker and the employment counselor. So we really do try to provide a wraparound service where we're working directly with that financial worker, with the client and keeping each other informed about where they're at. So they get referred to us. We do an orientation to our program services. And the orientation to the program services starts with an assessment. And so my staff have been certified to provide an employability measure. They need to go through two different trainings to get that certification. And then we work at determining what does that client need as far as transportation, any social supports, what's going on with their children and behaviors that are there, legal concerns, education, finances, health, workplace skills, dependent care, safe living and childcare. Those are all addressed and rated so that as we start to develop the employment plan, we try to address those barriers, but their strengths. What do they have that are going on in that household that will really help them to get a job? And that's the bottom line, is to get a job and get to self-sufficiency for their family. So from the assessment, we're developing an employment plan. And in that employment plan, that's where our services come into play. We want to make sure that when we're using your money, that we're providing services that's really going to help that person get to employment. So they'll start with career planning. What's it look like for what they want to do? We have a workshop that's set up where they take a look at their interests, some of their aptitudes, but really the labor market. How does what they want to do fit into the labor market? That's in existent. And that's basically through all of our programs. With education, we've got high school, GED, ESL, post-secondary education, short-term training, CDL, CNA and welding. Those are the, a lot of the ones that we see being funded right now. And then our work training where we will be placing people on the job. We're the employer of record. We supervise that site and they're gaining work experience so that they can get to be employed. Now what I can tell you for this year, between the education and the work training, 70% of your funds right now are going toward that, which we kind of feel like we're, we're kind of ahead of the ballgame with COVID being that way. So knowing that we're trying to put those funds to work for you and for the clients. On-the-job training will pay up to 50% of somebody's salary to get started with a job. Now that's really an employer benefit and it's intended to say, hey, give our person a chance on the job. We're going to help cover some of their training costs so that they still have a job when that on-the-job training contract is done.
Do employees have a, not employees, people have a choice on which jobs they want?
Yes.
I mean, if you say, a job opening here and we'll train you for that and he says, well, I don't like that kind of work. I mean, do they have a choice to say that?
They, they do. They have a choice about the type of jobs that they're applying for. Because with the on-the-job training, that meant they've applied to that employer. So they've gone out, they've made that application with the employer, then we're going to come in and talk to the employer about hiring our person. So they'll tell us who they've applied for.
But if you have a job, you know, we're of a job, but they don't want to do that type of work, did he still have that choice of whether they want to work or not, or?
Okay. We might be going into a little different area, but when they're working with us and somebody refuses to work with us, for example, and that can be not taking a job, somebody that just does not want to take a job. In the EMFIP program itself, there are, people can lose part of their benefits if they're not following through with their employment plan, which could be that they are refusing to work with us, refusing to engage with us, which could mean on a job. So there, and I'm going to go through that a little bit more as we get into what happens if you don't comply with programs. Our job search assistance, we do that in a classroom training style typically. Right now, we're having to use different platforms and we kind of laughed. Last year, you wouldn't have heard me use the word platform except about a pair of shoes. So now we're using different platforms that are there. Really think about job search, job finding, getting, keeping, advancing and leaving a job. So we focus really on where do you find the jobs? How do you network? When I ask you, tell me what you can bring to me in this job, we're going to help you to figure that out. What are my weaknesses? I helped somebody recently to do a job search and they said to me, I always get stuck when they ask me, what are the weaknesses that you have on the job? What are those weaknesses? And, you know, I spent some time going through that with this person and, you know, part of it was you've got to slow down on your speaking. So he went through that. He went to the employer. The employer said to him, nobody's answered that honestly before. He got the job. So he called me up very excited about the fact that he got the job and that he answered it truthfully. Job clubs, this is where we're still focusing on soft skill development. Go to the job, get along with your supervisor, get along with your coworker, time management, balancing work and family. So there are several different workshops that we have available for that soft skill development. And then family stabilization services. That's again, a state-funded part of the EMFIP program. And that's for those folks that have gotten, things that are interfering with them getting a job, whether it's an illness or an illness in their family, then they have a different route that they can go to. And that plan will be focused on their, their, oftentimes, we're going to see it as mental health needs and what we were doing to work at things with, in coordination with Lakeland. So that's another branch of the EMFIP program. Okay. There are statutory requirements. So people, once they do their plan with us, we, they need to meet with us on a weekly basis, just to let us know how they're going with their job search, for those that are in that job search portion of things. And then they also need to have a monthly contact for those that have moved off from that, that job search portion of it. It's like, how are they doing? They need to report everything to us. They have worksheets that they need to fill out. And then a quarterly review is really taking a look at that employment plan. Have they been meeting the goals of that employment plan? And if not, what needs to change within that plan? We really consider that as a joint case management. When we're working with that client, they're working with the employment counselor, they're oftentimes talking to the financial worker, or they could be working with programs like CAP LP where we're working together on a plan. The compliance with the plan. When it's there, they need to be following through with what's there. So when we're monitoring, we're taking a look at the goals. Are they meeting the basic requirements and are they being tracked? So EMFIP sets up that you need to do so many hours per week or per month of job search, getting a job, going to school, and they need to report that to us. So a single parent with a child under the age of six, they need to do 87 hours per month. In our plans with them, we're writing 30 to 35 hours per week. We're really trying to push for that full-time employment. A single parent over the age of six needs to put in 130 hours per month. Same thing. We're looking to increase their hours that are there. In a two-parent household, it's 55 hours per week that they need to put in. Anybody that has a family stabilization service or family violence waiver, they're going to be excluded from those mandatory hours that are there. And our plan will focus on what they need to do with a safety plan or working with another provider. With compliance, we're constantly monitoring that plan to say, are you doing what you need to do? If you're not doing what you need to do, we need to let them know, obviously through talking with them, but if they, we will send out a note and notice, notice of intent to sanction that says, hey, we noticed that you're not doing what you need to do and you need to contact us to get those steps in place. If they haven't at that point in time, in 10 days, we let the county know that they are now in non-compliance and they will move into losing portions of their grant. So that first time that they're in sanction, it's a 10% sanction. The second through the sixth time, they're in a 30% sanction. And the seventh sanctioned month, the case closes. Now this is for the full 60 months. So if somebody went into sanction in April of 2010, that counts as one month. And if they're still on in 2012, it counts as their second month. Or if they've closed, those sanctions continue for the lifetime that they use that grant. So that's the monitoring that goes on with pre-EMFIP, not the extended EMFIP program. So there is a chance that they will lose their money and that if the case closes, it does need to remain closed for 30 days. They need to have a compliance plan written with us. If they don't follow through with those steps that are in that plan, that plan, their case will not reopen.
Who sets those percentages?
The state does. Okay. We have a variety of other programs and I really wanted to emphasize the dislocated worker program right now. We have received some additional funds in that dislocated worker program. And that's through folks that are unemployed through no fault of their own. And are, we really want to help them get trained and retrained and back into the labor market. So we're trying to get the word out there, hey, come and see us if you've lost that job through no fault of your own. We want to see everybody, obviously, but we've got a special emphasis there right now. We have four different youth programs. We have federal youth programs, state youth programs. I've got a special program right now called the Youth Build Project and it works directly with construction. So our kids that are needing to finish high school, get their GED, we have a youth build coordinator that's hired that goes out onto the work site and helps those kids get some skills for construction on the work site. And they're eligible for that until they're 24 years old. Our senior program, people are eligible for that starting at 55 years old. And that senior program, again, it's a small program, but it will people, put people on a work site. Career advising. Part of your funds are going to provide career advising at Red River Area Learning Center and the West Central Juvenile Justice Program. I've got a career advisor that goes into the schools that works specifically with youth as they're starting to take a look at their future and what they want to do. Our career lab, that's a universal component. Anybody can walk in- Anybody can walk into our services when our doors are open, a hundred percent, and utilize those services to, um, contact employers, put their resumes together, look for jobs that are there. That's our career lab. And it's a universal service, so anyone's eligible. Some of our other programs have eligibility that go along with them. So that's a wrap-up of EMFIB and some of the programs that we have.
So I'm supposed to ask you now, um, would you like to defer me to next week since we've gone well over our time limit? Take a break and stretch?
I'm okay with it. You're interested in it.
I am a fast talker. Alrighty. So, and we're now going to talk about child support fraud and collections. This sounds really loud. Am I really loud? Okay. Um, I have three pretty distinct areas in my unit. So the first one is welfare fraud. Um, at this time, I have two full-time welfare fraud investigators. And both of these positions are eligible for fifty percent federal financial participation dollars. So we get half of the funding back, um, from the feds. And in addition to that, we get up to a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars annually for fraud prevention from the state through a grant. So this program is pretty well-funded, um, outside of county dollars. We do two different types of investigations in this unit. Um, we do front-end investigations, which are trying to focus on stopping a grant from being issued. Um, this is called fraud prevention and it's a state initiative that, um, we actually got to pilot and have had ever since. And then we do backend investigations, which would result in possible criminal charges. Um, and those for, those would be for cases where we catch it after the grant has already gone out. We then need to try and collect that back. Um, we had been providing the FBI services to Becker County from two thousand nine through July of last year. Um, Becker County now has their own investigator that the state is funding for them. So that's a good thing because Clay County has very high referral numbers in comparison to other counties. And so now we can focus more on, um, our Clay County cases. Um, the majority of our referrals come from financial workers and most of the time, we're dealing with household composition where somebody comes in and applies and then we find out that the other parent of those children might also be in the whole home and it's not being counted, so they're not necessarily eligible. Unreported income or employment and verification of residency. We're in a unique position where we're a border city with, um, North Dakota and people will come in and apply here, but they're actually living across the river. Um, and for, for the fraud area, um, program waivers in the income maintenance area have really reduced referrals, but they continue to be quite busy. Um, my next slide is just showing you some statistics. Um, this is just for the Clay County. I didn't pull Becker County's into the, this graph. But you can see in two thousand and twenty, we had three hundred and sixty-six FBI referrals. That's down from five twenty-seven. Um, normally, we're running around five hundred or so each year. Um, what they do is they look at the dollar amount that we prevent from going out. So this is the front-end investigation. So last year, we prevented, um, a hundred and fifty thousand from going out the door um, before, um, before any grants were issued. And then what they do is they figure that it takes about three months to actually catch it, either through a computer program or somebody calling in saying, "Hey, this person shouldn't be getting money." So they multiply the hundred and fifty by three. So we avoided, um, four hundred and fifty thousand, six hundred and forty-two dollars from going out the door. Um, out of that, there were some overpayments, so we may have caught it a month or two later. Um, so we had that. And then, um, we averaged about three days per investigation. So we're, we're well under the state's, um, fifteen-day, um, investigation time period. For criminal cases, um, that kind of really just depends on what comes in throughout the year and, um, when we can gather all the information that we need. Um, last year, we referred fourteen cases over to the county attorney's office. We had eleven convictions. ADH is the Administrative Disqualification Hearing System. Um, we don't tend to use that as much. You have to prove almost more than you do going to, to court for a crim, a criminal action. So, um, we chose to just go through the criminal action through the county attorney. Any questions about any of that? Told you I'd talk fast. Um, I also supervise county collections. So this is an area where we're collecting outstanding debts. Um, I have two full-time collections officers and, um, they also are eligible for the fifty percent FFP. Um, we work with public assistance overpayments. We get incentives for those through the auditor's office and reimbursements. We do foster care, detox, highway department, probate and medical assistance recovery, uh, sometimes collect for environmental health and county burials. Um, county burials, those have become very interesting in the last year with how, um, how people have had to deal with funeral situations. Um, a lot of times, they're having a very small one initially and then another one later on. Um, we can't pay for both. And, um, so it's, it's become really challenging dealing with some of those issues and trying to work with families that are trying to make it work with the money that they have available to pay for, um, services. Um, the collections officers will also act as representative payees for children in placement who get social security benefits. Um, they work on probate cases where we have a preferred claim. Um, so if, if an elderly person passes away, we then are looking at the estate to try and collect back to help pay for the assistance that this person may have received. Uh, we do a lot of skip tracing and locating people. We file revenue recapture for overdue debts, which would be through the Minnesota State Tax Offset Program. And then they also do some, some functions for the child support unit. They facilitate buckle swabs for genetic testing. Um, they monitor driver's license suspension and then they work with judgment renewals. Um, the next graph is just kind of showing you twenty nineteen and twenty twenty statistics as far as what they're collecting. Um, we work with, I separated it out by detox, probate and county burial, foster care and social security payments, and then the public assistance program. So in twenty nineteen, we collected nine hundred and sixty dollars and in twenty twenty, nine hundred and eighty-five thousand. Going back to the county, the state, or the federal government.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I just wanted to highlight the twenty twenty amounts for the probate and county burial. Uh, the amount collected in twenty-two versus the balance due. Uh, was there a large collection on that one? I mean, props to your department for only having twenty-two thousand due.
Yeah, and that, that one's a hard one to put in there, but I put it in anyway.
Yeah.
Um, we don't normally add the balance due until we know what we're going to get. Because there's so much back and forth and paperwork in determining that, that, um, it just happened that right now, most of them have been paid and we just have a small amount.
Okay. And then can you just highlight the detox piece? Uh, because I know that there's, um, based on the amount collected versus the balance due, there's such a large disparity there. Is that because of the nature of the client served, or?
That's a big part of it. Um, another piece is that a lot of times, we just don't have enough information to locate these people. They haven't, you know, given them their birthday or their social security number or their address or that kind of thing. Um, a lot of them might be students from the North Dakota side and they leave Minnesota. We don't really have a way to locate them or collect. Um, so detox is an area that's, it's been a frustration, but when it was first set up for us to try and collect for detox, the thought was, if we collected a dollar back, we're doing good. Um, we do have a debt write-off program for collections that the board approved several years ago.
Right.
And the first year that we did that, I wrote off well over a million dollars in this area.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, that's something just to touch base on for new commissioners. So when we, when we write, write those off, it, it's, it, it's something that's been budgeted for.
Yes.
And I, I think that, you know, so, so what happens is, is we, we kind of have a history of, of what we're going to spend in those areas. We're hopeful that we can recollect it, and I mean hopeful. Uh, but hopeful is often doubtful. Um, but we still have to show that on our books as a potential, uh, source of reimbursement. Uh, and ultimately, then, we're required by statute or law. Uh, Rhonda, you can correct me for both, either one of you. But we do end up having to at some point in time write these off.
Yes, but it's, it's a long period of time. I believe it's six or seven years minimum. And we have to try and, and file for tax offset and, and do a lot of different things before it ever comes to.
I guess the point I'm making is, is, is the, when we write them off, we're not duplicating an expense.
Correct.
And, and sometimes it, it can, it can appear that you're, you're duplicating an expense and we're not.
Yeah.
Because we've already, we've already accounted for those expenditures within each annual budget.
Yes.
Okay, just, just wanted to make that clear.
Quick question.
Yes.
Couple slides back, you had environmental health listed. What is that and where does that fall in here?
Um, that would kind of be an other area. Um, I don't believe that we've had one recently. But yeah, it was always pretty minimal when we would get from them or the highway department. Okay. Then in child support enforcement, um, at this time, I have six full-time child support officers and I'll be calling them probably CSOs as we go through the presentation. And I have six support enforcement aides. We refer to those as SEAs. Um, in child support, we are working to, uh, locate parents, establish parentage, establish court orders for basic support, medical support, and childcare support. We enforce those orders. We review and modify those orders. Um, we work with other states and other countries to, um, enforce if somebody does not live here in Minnesota. Um, and then we collect and process payments. Funding for this area, we get federal financial participation dollars at sixty-six percent. Um, we receive federal incentives. And then those federal incentives are also trickle-down for statewide performance. Um, they look at five different areas. They look at paternity establishment, current support collected, the establishment of court orders, collection on cases with arrears, and cost effectiveness. So in federal fiscal year two thousand and twenty, um, we brought in total revenue of one million, two hundred and thirty-five thousand, nine hundred and ninety-two dollars. Questions? Okay. Um, in federal fiscal year two thousand and twenty, we collected eight million, one hundred and sixty-eight thousand, five hundred and sixteen dollars. This was a little bit inflated due to the COVID stimulus payment. Um, with the first payment that was issued, that could have been offset for child support purposes. And, um, we, we, uh...
So is it, by, by that, you mean it was garnished for child support cer?
Yes.
Purposes?
Yes.
So it didn't go to the individual?
Correct. Yes. And, um, unfortunately, what happens with that, when it's a federal tax offset, that applies towards public assistance arrears. It doesn't go to the family. So we wrote off a lot of public assistance arrears in that time period. We only had a couple of weeks, but, um, we, we did our best to, to do that, to make sure that the money that the stimulus applied towards was going to a family. We missed a few and we couldn't back them off, but, um, we did our best to get that to happen because the intent of the COVID stimulus was to help families. Um, so out of the eight million that we collected, over six million went towards current support and a little over two million went towards arrears. Normally, we've, this is the first time we've ever collected over eight million and I think that was largely due just to the COVID. Um, we averaged two thousand, five hundred and twenty-two cases. And for every dollar we spent, we collected four dollars and forty-one cents. Um, right now, over ninety percent of our cases are not receiving a cash grant. So the money that we're collecting is generally going out the door to families to help them support their kids. Um, and about a third of our caseload is interstate, which we're the highest in the state on that, I believe. Um, it makes it a, a challenge. We, we don't control what another state will do to, to collect on our behalf. And then cases that we receive aren't necessarily enforceable. Um, we've gotten referrals with a seven hundred dollar a month child support obligation and the person's on general assistance. They have no ability to pay and we can't get the other state to modify their order. So, um, that's just one of the things that we deal with in Clay County.
So can I, so if, if there's a, um, somebody owes child support and they're now living and working, for example, in North Dakota, um, the process of you contacting their employer and asking for, um, payroll deduction?
Income withholding.
Income withholding? Do they not have to comply with that?
They do. Um, we can send income withholding to most states directly if we know where they're working. But if we don't know where they're working or it's an employer that's not compliant, then we would send what's called a UWF petition to North Dakota and ask them to open a child support case and enforce on our behalf. Okay? Um, so here are the federal performance, um, measures. So I compared them to the state average. Paternity is a little unique, that, um, the way they calculated, it's, ends up being over a hundred percent for the most part. Um, we're pretty close on orders established. Current support or current collections, we're a little bit low. We've been working on that area for a long, long time now and I do think that the interstate caseload is what's really holding us back in that area. Um, we're currently working on a performance improvement plan. Um, I'm trying to set up a meeting with the state to go through some ideas that we have to, um, try and address this issue. But, um, something that we're working on. Um, arrears collections, again, that could be affected by, um, the interstate caseload. If there's arrears owed to another state and they got a tax offset, they're going to keep the money for their arrears. It wouldn't come here. So we have that unique situation again. And then we're a little bit higher than average on cost effectiveness.
Sandy, can I just go back one second? Uh, on the arrears, when you talked about the eight million collected and two-point-one million went to arrears, wouldn't, wouldn't that still go to families?
Um, it depends. Um, if they were on public assistance, then that, the amount that was owed that month is actually assigned to the state. So, um, or if they're still on public assistance.
It could be, because then they wouldn't have had that as, as considered revenue to them? I, I guess I don't understand.
Um, if, if somebody is, is receiving public, an EMFIB cash grant, then the child support is assigned to the state and that goes to help reimburse the cash grant. It actually goes out the door and then you guys, what, three months later, figure it into your calculation for what they're entitled to. So it can reduce the EMFIB cash grant. But, um, still, if, if the child support obligation is five hundred dollars a month and there are, we only receive two hundred and fifty, then two hundred and fifty will later on apply towards that public assistance, um, case in, instead of going out to the family.
That they receive because of the reduced amount of child support.
Well, yeah, they're, they're... Well, yeah, their, their grant would be affected. If we only got $250 in a month, then three months down, when they calculate for that month, they would probably get more money.
Right.
Yeah.
Thank you. I, I needed that.
Okay. Then just wrapping it up, lessons learned during the pandemic. Awesome IT department here. They really, really worked hard to get us the tools that we needed to be in the office one day and working from home the next day. We have office support that by being in the office, they have been able to really keep everything going here so that people working from home could get their jobs done. So I had to give some kudos out there. But we've been able to answer our phones. We've been able to send documents, receive our documents, and really focus on getting the work completed. I know there's been a lot of competition today that my unit is the best. So I'm just going to say my unit really rocks. We've been making it work and.
Mr. Gross is probably going to make that motion.
There you go. Now, you know, people.
You're just in the running right.
There, okay. But you know, people would, at, working at home, they would figure something out and they would share it with everybody else so that, you know, we were all really having a lot of success doing that. We've been having a lot of success getting our job done without face-to-face interaction with clients. Court hearings by phone are working really well, and, and the advantage there is we feel we're almost getting more participation because people don't have to take, take time off of work or travel to, to be here. And so that part is really going well. And I just wanted to let you know that we are very grateful to the board for supporting us throughout this time. It's really been a crazy year, and you guys have made it possible for people to get their jobs done. So thank you.
Excellent, thank you. Any questions?
Maybe not a question, but just a comment. I, you know, I think it's important. I appreciate the interstate challenges that you bring to our attention. And I think the more conversations we can have with our state leaders in terms of continuing to advocate for that. It's, it's troubling to me that we're the top third and number three in the state in terms of that challenge. And, and I, I think it, you know, goes to the border city challenges that we talk about on a lot of different hands. But I certainly feel that it's, it's worthwhile having those conversations at the state, with the state leaders.
Well, and the state is actually in contact with the leaders in North Dakota, and we're hoping to be able to get a work group together to talk about interstate issues between the two states.
Very good.
All right, thank you for your good reports. So before we go into the committee reports, I want to comment that these last few weeks, our agendas have been running a little bit longer than what we have had planned. And I, I, I guess as you, what you're seeing and what you've heard today, I think it's important that we get these, especially this year, some with new commissioners. You know, I, I have a, as board chair, I have, I've let them go longer than what our time allotment has been, but I think it's important for both our new commissioners and the public to get these updates. And so I apologize for our agendas running long, but I think it's been time well spent.
Well, I think it's pretty tough to time some of these presentations, you know.
Yes, I apologize as well.
No need, no need on your part, Rhonda.
I don't see a problem with them. You know, it's good information.
I don't either, and I appreciate it as a new commissioner. It's, it's given us information we need.
I, I, you know, I certainly respect other people's time, and, and we all have, could potentially have other commitments. So I just, I think Tuesdays, it's probably good to not plan on anything at the, at the time of the scheduled adjournment because it's likely, it's probably not going to happen for a few months, but always good. Okay, so let's go to our committee reports and, let's see, who did I start with last time? I gotta, Commissioner Mojo, do you want to start today?
Yeah, cool, perfect. Last week, I attended the planning commission meeting. We did have four public hearings. One was a petition for a text amendment to the Clay County Development Code. That was approved, not approved, but recommended for approval to this board. We will see that, that shortly. I do want to say I appreciate Matt Jacobson from our county planning department. That was something that there was a lot of concern, and there was some dialogue with both the city of Dilworth and the city of Moorhead. And it's a classic example that you can sit down at the table and, and respectfully hammer some stuff out. So it was nice that we were able to come to an agreeable solution for not only the landowner, but the cities and county. We did have a request for a plotted major subdivision in Oakport Township that was approved for recommendation as well. The next item was a request for an interim use permit for gravel mining in Hagan Township from RJ Savaral and Sons that was approved. There were concerns from DNR in regards to groundwater, and we did make sure that there was room for working with DNR on, in their conditions. The next was a request to amend an additional use permit for Next Day Up Solar Company. That was a prior approved permit, but for whatever reason, they were not able to get the work done, so they needed to come to us for approval on that. That, that is in Spring Prairie Township, and we did approve that. And then we did have discussion that regarding the Clay County Comprehensive Plan update, we will be meeting on Friday to update that. I attend, attended virtually a meeting with Prairie Lakes Recycling. Good information there. They're working on some, some issues, but I think overall, good issues. Kirk had kind of alluded to the fact that there are some legislation statewide that could have some effects on that, so continuing to look at that going forward. I had a phone call with Rob Sip from the Red, Red River Watershed Management Board. Good update, continuing the dialogue now that we still don't have our two watersheds involved in that, kind of wanting to collaborate on when, when would be an appropriate time to continue the dialogue on if it makes sense to join that red board. I know there's major pluses and minuses on both, but I appreciate his perspective and willingness to have conversation. I attended the diversion authority land management board, and good updates from them. That in the, I think virtual meetings are great, but for me personally, that meeting is very challenging because there are so many things that we need to cover, and by schedule are only allowed one hour. And so, you know, I, I hope that we can kind of work the kinks out with that going forward because there are some very, very important discussions and decisions that we are making. There's a conversation on organic farmland that, that it's really, really something that we're continuing to have discussions on. We do need to make that right in terms of what our, what our policy is going forward. And talked a little bit about who the representative for, what is that? The contract for outreach, that is, we talked, talked about, sorry. It's kind of a crazy week. So I also attended the solid waste advisory council meeting virtually. Good updates from all the departments. As you heard, I feel that was covered fairly well with Kirk's reports. Tomorrow, we do have a full slate of interviews set for the transfer station. I look forward to that. I attended the extension committee subgroup for the interview panels that we will be having at one o'clock today. I also attended the MCC Joint Powers Authority Board Meeting. We had approved a new chair. Congratulations, Commissioner Campbell. Talked about the property status, property acquisition status reports, and continued the discussion on, on project lands and organic farmland. We did approve three, three of the appraisal reports, one of which is the RHDP. What's that stand for again? Here I am with the acronyms. I had my cheat sheet.
There's probably more there than there is.
Replacement, replacement housing differential payment. And then also approved a minimum compensation report amount, and then talked about the environmental monitor easement appraisals and outreach plan. I did have one conversation with a landowner that was concerned about the environmental monitoring payment that went out. And so then worked after the meeting with Eric Dodds to continue to talk about that. Had a negotiation summary on one property, and then talked about the farmland leases that will be going out with those agreements. And talked a little bit about adopting our hunting access policy. As you recall, Clay County does not prevent hunting on county-owned properties. And I was, it is my hope that whatever policy decision we have going forward mirrors how we address county lands as a whole. I attended Friday the Otter Tail Watershed, One Watershed, One Plan Meeting. It was really stemmed around a decision from Becker County to sign on to both the Wild Rice One Watershed Plan and the Buffalo Red One Watershed Plan. They are maintaining that they do not want to sign on to the Otter Tail Watershed, One Watershed, One Plan because they didn't feel it was worthwhile. And, and I just, from someone who's been involved with a lot of the discussions, both at the state and local level, I see nothing but a positive to continue to work forward with that. So I did have a phone call with one of the Becker County commissioners to encourage them to continue to work going forward. I think it's important to note that we do have the ability to have a say in how those plans look going forward, but signing the MOU to get started needs to happen first. So we'll see what happens with that. And then I had also Friday the AMC Extension Committee Meeting. We did sign off our approval on the three-year MOU that will be used to negotiate with the counties. I think it's a responsible plan. It does include interns. It has not included interns in the past, and so I think that's appropriate to make sure that they're getting compensated in those negotiations as well. I believe that concludes my reports.
Thank you. Commissioner Abinger.
Hey, last, last Tuesday, I had a virtual meeting with some of the people from the diversion authority regarding just prep for an upcoming, this week, meeting with Senator Klobuchar, virtual meeting. With the change in Washington, I think Minnesota representatives are going to have a little more emphasis than, than over the last four years in getting us in the president's budget and looking at some of the earmarks that are coming up. So that's to be developed, excuse me, to be developed later this week. On Wednesday, had a meeting of the Public Outreach Committee for the diversion authority. And I have to agree with Commissioner Mojo. We have three meetings in a row that are each given an hour, and every one of them ran over. And that's not a problem. That's not, I mean.
By the way, I didn't share any of those.
I know. You'd move them along. But a lot, you know, a lot of it is conversations that need to happen. And so since I was in the first one and the last one, I kind of, I kind of got a view of that. But the conversations in all of these committee meetings, you know, in some instances revolved around the same thing, which is the public outreach contract that this has been agreed to for a year. I'll get to that in my final meeting. But there were some important things put forward on both sides, one of which is in the discussions with Governor Walz. It was determined that 400 miles is what is a local contract, and that would include the Twin Cities. By the same token, when you're hiring, hiring people to work with the North Dakota Legislature, people who, who know the ground there are probably a better selection. So I think RFPs are going to need to take place, at least in that instance. However, the point was made that RFPs for, for professional services are not required in North Dakota. So that's something that's a little different than we have in, in Minnesota. The PR for Good and Michael Klein's contracts were discussed there at length. It was moved forward with a recommendation from this committee to the finance committee, which I, I attended virtually subsequent to that. We did get a good report from the executive director, Joel Paulson. North Dakota Legislature, at least out of the, out of the House, has advanced a bonding bill that could be upwards of, north of 435 million, where a large portion of that will be directed into the diversion authority project. We then, again, had a, a long conversation about the Public Outreach Committee and the, the contract that came out of that. And that was addressed subsequent to that on Thursday with the diversion authority board meeting. Just to jump to that part, it was towards the end of the meeting. It did pass, it passed narrowly, and it passed with the, by one vote, depending on which one of us you want. I kept it from being a tie. But it is a one-year contract, and it will be viewed, I think, in the context of an RFP before it's all said and done. General Counsel Shockley gave a great report on the settlement proposal. All entities other than the diversion have signed it and is going forward on that. So it looks like litigation and the DNR permit approval has really cleared the decks. Corps of Engineer update. We also got an update from Commissioner Cheryl from Cass County on land management. And subsequent to that meeting, we went into executive session to discuss a lawsuit issue that's ongoing with the, a construction company and the diversion authority. Also on Thursday, I virtually attended a Moorhead Area Workforce Group with Joe Russo from the EDC and Shannon Full, the executive director of the chamber. They are putting together a very interesting-looking platform for employees and employers within the Moorhead area, but also include Fargo, but the outreach was to Moorhead leaders. So that's something that's going to be, we're looking towards the future on. And then yesterday, Commissioner Kaylee and I met with Andy Martin just to have a discussion about the MA issue and try and get that on Senator Klobuchar's radar. And also, we touched on the upcoming meeting that we're going to have for the diversion. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Commissioner Kaylee.
Thursday, the 24th, we had the CAP LP Board Meeting. And I was officially elected to that position at that meeting. We also approved the Head Start self-assessment and bylaws, Head Start enrollment criteria, annual budget, childcare, or district and regional services, and had a great update from their, their communications person, Amanda even, and some of the work that she's been doing in the last year and how they try to spread the word about their services to communities. On Friday, the 25th, I went over to the Historical and Cultural Society of Clay County building just to walk around with Maureen and talk about some of the negotiations that are happening between the city of Moorhead and the historical society there. And those are ongoing. We'll see what happens. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Commissioner Gross.
Last Tuesday, we, we had the Highway Track Meeting. We discussed the formula that's used for gravel tax distribution. There, we went to the township contracts, which was on the agenda today, and the local road improvement plan, which was on the agenda today. We also went over the five-year construction plan. We have to have a year, annual meeting on that, if we get approval for that. And we decided that we're going to do that during one of our meetings here in March. I don't know which date, can't remember which date we picked, but. I don't know which date, can't remember which date we picked, but we're just going to have to do it during the meeting because a lot of times, there's very little representation that comes forward. So instead of selecting a different date and a different time, we just thought we'd do it right during our meetings here.
Yeah, it's not a public hearing, but it's a public information meeting, which we'll have a designated time on our agenda to do.
From there, we went on this road going north by the Sugar Bee Plant. There's going to be a speed, we're looking at doing a speed study there. There's some complaints about high speeders going through there, so probably with that program, Sheriff emptying it today, he'll get a few of them, but I'll take care of that part. But also in Linden, the turn lane thing has come along good. We still have to acquire the land that we need for that turn lane. We also had PIC Committee that day on Tuesday. We discussed, again, an agenda item, Tim Dent's job. So then Wednesday was the One Watershed One Plan thing, and Chinese already covered that, but I think Buffalo, excuse me, Becker County has now signed off.
Right, I report... My report was for the Otter Tail One Watershed.
Oh, okay. Okay, well, I attended the Buffalo one, and at that time, Becker County hadn't signed off yet, and now they have signed off, I think, on that one and on the Wild Rice one, so moving forward on that. Thursday, had the Township meeting. There again, that was discussed, Dave discussed that already, where they agreed to the final $38 increase. Excuse me. We also covered the gravel contracts, which there's one township that would like to see a change in that because they feel they got more gravel pits in their township than the others, and he'd see, like to see the formula changed a little bit, but we must have had around, I don't know, 20, 25 townships represented at that meeting, and no one was in favor of changing it. So we really didn't get any support for that. I don't know if we can move ahead with changing that gravel pit contract just because one township isn't, wants to change, you know? So not that the property doesn't need changing, but there's really no support for changing it. And those were my meetings.
Thank you. Last Tuesday, I also attended the PIC meeting, and it was talked about with Tim Dent's position. Highway Tracking was also that day. The only other thing that, I mean, Franks gave a good report in that. We have been having some discussions about the 11th Street Underpass Project in Morehead. MinDOT has come out, and apparently that project, project estimated costs have increased, and they're kind of at a fixed dollar amount that MinDOT has for it. So there's a request on behalf of the city and the county to up their potential. So we're looking through our five-year plan to see how we might be able to accommodate some of that request. It certainly is an extremely important project that benefits our entire county. So that being said, there will be more to come on that, on that whole process. Then on Wednesday morning, I attended the Prairie Lakes meeting. That was a very quick meeting for that. We did enter into an engagement letter for the annual audit, and we did, you know, they talked about the downtime that occurred for some of the stuff that's being done within the bonding bill, that the $2 million bonding bill to get some projects done in an expedited manner, and that is being done, and hopefully we'll see some benefits from that. That afternoon, I attended the Public Outreach Meeting of the Diversion Authority, as Commissioner Abinger has talked about. And the majority of that meeting was in regards to how public outreach is going to be handled in the future, and staffing, and in that process, I did not support the recommendation to hire the plan that they had recommended. I felt that it was, in my opinion, that there wasn't enough transparency involved, and it, you know, was a $200,000 hire, and it was, to me, it just felt like it was hand-selected. And I, from my standpoint, I didn't like that, and I made that clear in the outreach meeting. As a matter of fact, in the outreach meeting, I think I was the lone dissenting vote on it. Then we had land management, and I think Commissioner Mojo has talked enough about that, so I won't do it. And then Thursday morning, while we talk about that, I do want to, so then on Thursday afternoon, we had the Diversion Authority meeting, and that was kind of the topic of the day. It's been something that has forced all of these meetings to go overtime. And, you know, it was discussed, and I, you know, that motion to go along with that plan and that hire, it passed by one vote. And that's, in a lot of the diversion stuff, that's a rarity. You know, there's usually, there's very few things that I haven't supported in this diversion process, but that was one of them. And I still, I'm hopeful, but I do want to talk, Commissioner Abinger mentioned about the governor stating that we have a 400-mile radius for what they consider local. I think we need to really understand that the intent of that was, was that the size of this project will require the ability to have construction firms from outside the local area. I think that was the intent of the governor's, you know, statement about local, because he wanted to have, he wanted to be able to have those metro companies with large employment have access to this federal project. I'm not so sure that the intent was to, for the local administration of it to, you know, expand that far out. That's, I can't get into his head, but I'm assuming, I remember the discussion, that that was more about the ability to have Twin Cities be able to at least have an opportunity to work on this project, which I think is fine. Do you want to comment? Sure.
Thank you. So as somebody who has sat at this board for a few years and has usually been the one being quite critical and voting down certain things that the Diversion Authority has brought forward, a large amount of those decisions on my part have come because the Diversion Authority made mistakes, critical mistakes, in terms of outreach to affected landowners and communities. And I have listened to the majority of the conversations, because they are posted publicly, regarding this, these two contracts with the agency in Iceland and Minneapolis. And I first want to thank you, Kevin, because I think your vote came after understanding the concerns that you have heard and from landowners locally. And so I'm concerned that the Diversion Authority, you know, approved something like this, because I do have trouble with a local landowner contacting somebody upwards of 400 miles away to address something. I think it's, I think it's tone deaf, you know, for lack of a better phrase, in terms of what we've heard on the ground from local residents. And so I would definitely encourage those contracts, the awardees of those contracts, to learn from the mistakes of the past and not, just be very careful. I just have been concerned with that going forward and want to make sure that our local landowners and citizens can meet with somebody local, because I think it's really important to have that local voice.
Thank you. Commissioner Abinger.
Just to add to that, and those are legitimate and I think very viable concerns that were just expressed by Commissioner Mojo. I had to think about this in my vote and had it, really, there were two factors that came out of this. There was a lot of good discussion, and I think the point's been made. And I think there'll be an RFP, and I think it'll be local. This is something that they heard from, that was expressed from both sides of the river, and I think that's going to be addressed. In the interim, the one-year period that they've got the contracts in place now, there is local staff now. There is somebody with the Diversion Authority, and this is their responsibility. And it's a new employee, but I think she heard loud and clear what the expectation is of all the boards, and the expectation is for our local property owners. So I think we're, I think moving forward, I trust we won't have these concerns again, and if we do, I can assure you, I will be voting with Commissioner Campbell next time to say no. So the point, you know, having worked for boards for a big chunk of my life or commissions, there comes a time where you want to feel like you've, your operational decisions are yours to make. And to some degree, that's this case, but not when the constituents of people who are on your board have got a need and you have concerns that's not being met. And that's a legitimate concern that was expressed by both commissioners here, and I think it got heard. Doesn't mean that there hasn't been a problem with this decision, but moving forward, I think it's going to be addressed.
Thank you, Commissioner Abinger. Back to my, I do want to go back to, so then I also had land management after public outreach and a lot of the same discussions Commissioner Mojo talked about. But I, you know, I do want to point out that there are two commissioners on that land management from Clay County, and we have both been, and I've been following the lead of Commissioner Mojo on this, about the importance regarding, once we have lands that are no longer needed that we've, have acquired, and how to handle those lands, particularly those lands that fall into the ag area and to the producers, and that they have the first choice, their first chance at acquiring those. And Commissioner Mojo's had the lead on that, and we're kind of, we've been kind of insisting that that be part of our final mitigation plan, and I think it's starting to be well-received now, and I'm sure that it's going to be accepted. There becomes a little bit of a difference that we've learned between rural ag land and, for example, what the cities might have concerns about, about properties that are acquired within the city that may be, it may not be in the best interest of the city to have an adjoining property owner acquire those lands. So we're looking at some potential language within our mitigation plan that separates those issues, that allows what might transpire within a city to be dealt with differently than what we have in rural ag-producing land. It's a big, important topic, as Commissioner Mojo said, and I think we're going to be successful in getting that. And also, I do want to state that our landowners on the Minnesota side, through this process, when it comes to them having to potentially give up lands or in mitigation, that the place that they're going to that is the MCC JPA. And so we have Minnesota folks on that committee between the City Council of Morehead and our county commissioners. And I think we have been extremely open and fair and adjustable in our, in our working with the appraisal systems that are going on on those lands in Minnesota. So that brings me then to, Thursday, I had the Solid Waste Advisory Committee meeting. I think we've learned, you got more updates on that same stuff today that happened, so I'm not going to go into more of that. I talked about the Diversion Authority meeting on Thursday, but I also had the MCC JPA meeting that day, and as Commissioner Mojo talked about, we did approve five appraisals and one negotiated settlement. And again, that's what I'm referring to here, where we were able to work with landowners. We had one appraisal process, they came in with a counter offer, and we were able to make a settlement. And that's, that's a good sign moving forward, that some of the good things are happening. We reviewed 11 farmland lease options. Forty-two environmental monitoring easements, appraisals were approved. And I think that should cover the rest of that quite well. That should conclude my report. Mr. Larson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Last Tuesday, I attended both the Highway Tracking PIC that have been well-covered. I met with Mr. Milton on a series of issues here within the county, and that afternoon I met with Troy Amundson, the detox supervisor. On the 24th, we had county management. We received update from Kathy McKay. We discussed some of the courthouse changes that this board approved last week. And on that afternoon, I met with Joe Olson on a series of campus issues. I just want to say what a nice job he's been doing. Unbelievable amount of work going on with capital planning, the government-centered projects, and also just anticipating the move here in the, over the next few weeks.
So you want to put us, Joe, into the running too on that good job?
Yeah. All right. I just want to get all them covered.
I'm anxious to hear your motion.
That afternoon, I also had a department head evaluation. On the 25th, I attended the SWAC meeting that's been well-covered, but also I had an additional discussion on compost, composting and some increased costs and developing a plan moving forward there. We heard a little bit from Mr. Milton this morning on the courts. On Wednesday afternoon, I met, or yeah, Thursday afternoon, I met with some of our judges here in Clay County, Court Security and Joe. Again, the courts had anticipated initially not having trials till July, and then made the adjustment to this month. And so we're working with the courts and trying to ensure that they have adequate space for those jury trials moving forward, and part of that does include the space across the way. We don't have a finalized plan yet at this point, but some good discussion. On Thursday, also participated in MCC JPA. That's been, that's been addressed, and also the Township Maintenance Discussion that Commissioner Gross mentioned. On the first, we went over the Government Center. They're in the process of pulling the fiber this week. This will be the last week, full week, that HR and administration will be located here at the courthouse if all goes well. We will be coming out with a plan, much like we did with the DMV for our citizens. We're looking right now as the date of March 29th, where our land records, auditor treasure, planning, planning department, assessor and recorder will be shifting. We don't anticipate that there's going to be any closure. We're hoping to provide the service up to Friday, the 26th, at this location, and then moving to the new location on the 29th. And again, we'll have that on all of our platforms, social media platforms, and also our webpage as we move forward. Also, just wanted to cover quickly, we, for the last two meetings, each spring and fall, we've generally met with the rural cities in a meeting to kind of share what's happening. If a subordinate wishes, I'd like to discuss the possibility of having, having a meeting in April, if that would be the wish. We could look at a hybrid situation where we have some people, if they would wish to not be in person. We've been holding more meetings here in the county from the county perspective, and I think there may be a benefit of getting us all together again. If everyone's all right with that, or if we don't have any discussion?
Yeah, I think we should schedule something.
And I think a hybrid model is appropriate as well.
Okay, all right. Just wanted to touch base on a couple of different things. This past Friday, the governors, or excuse me, management budget came up with the new updated full forecast, again, as probably as citizens are well aware. Again, as probably as citizens are well aware, we went from having a proposed $883 million deficit to a $1.6 billion surplus for fiscal year '22, '23. We also saw an additional improvement of about $540 million for our current biennium. And so a lot of that is linked to higher revenues, lower spending. We had some additional funding that we received from the federal government back in December, and also the vaccination projections also impacted that, that piece. That brought about some additional discussions from the, the governor will be coming forward with an updated budget, but that also spurred some other discussions, part of which this board has, has touched on. We, we did send a letter to Minnesota Representatives, the governor, about the PPP. There are some additional bills that have been brought forward to look at that with it, with the update. And so the Senate appears optimistic anyway that there's a potential for, for a, an agreement by March 15th. And also, just wanted to, to touch base on, we talked a little bit about the substance abuse disorder and institutes of mental health with DHS and their, and their billing errors that occurred across the state of Minnesota. There's been some additional conversations now about bringing bills forward, forward there also. And, and on the federal level, the, if you saw that, the, they did the $1.9 trillion, trillion-dollar, about bill that passed the House. Within that, there is a $350 million, $350 billion allotment for, for counties, direct, counties and cities, and so we'll see, see what happens in the Senate here in the next couple of weeks. I think that concludes my report.
Ryan? You're good? All right. Colleen, anything for us?[1771.32][1771.32](laughter) An hour late, but-
We served that one today.